We're good to go. So I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Fairfax Town Council, Fairfax Women's Club, 46th Park Road, June 5th. And it is -- looks like exactly 7:00 PM. So with that, I'd like to ask for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Town Clerk, Michelle Gardner, would you like to do a roll call?
I would. Councilmember Lacks?
Here.
Vice Mayor Goddard?
Here.
Councilmember Reed?
Here.
Councilmember Ackerman?
Here.
And Mayor Kohler?
Here. So I'd like to do an announcement on the closed session. So we had two items. One was conference with legal counsel, existing litigation. In that item, we gave direction to staff and there was no reportable action. Regarding the conference with real property negotiators, I'd like to read a statement. For tonight, I'd like to offer the following report out of closed session, which is almost a repeat of what I read last month. There is no action and no direction was given to staff. Last meeting, the Town Council reported out of closed session that it discussed a conceptual proposal from the managing partner of the Miranda Heights property, also known as the Wall property, to purchase 10 acres of an existing 18-acre parcel west of Ridgeway for $500,000. We indicated that the council had just decided not to further explore the conceptual proposal regarding the Miranda Heights property at that time. However, later this evening, this proposal is on the agenda for discussion. Please remember that with regard to the Miranda Heights development application, council members cannot opine on the merits of the application until it is brought to the council for consideration after a recommendation from the Planning Commission. The request for a proposal for the environmental impact report consultant has not yet been issued. So it'll take some time before the Planning Commission and the council consider the application. And I just want to remind folks that anybody who wanted to comment for closed session should have been there prior to closed session. We always check with that. And so, Mr. Egger, we're not taking comments on closed session.
I'd like to make a point of order. If there is an item on your agenda and you speak to it, the public has a right to address the Town Council.
I just read a statement.
At this time, it doesn't matter what you just read. This is an item that's on the agenda. You have never met publicly to discuss the purchase of this property. Did you make that decision in secret someplace? How does the public know?
Frankly, so I would ask for our attorney, Heather Lee, to opine on this issue.
Yeah, I think you're being provided an opportunity to speak at this juncture, so.
At this juncture?
Well, in --
We're having this agenda item later on in the evening.
Right, later in the meeting, that's what I mean. At the time of the open session on the item.
Right, but there's a report out. What this says is, after roll call, there's an announcement of a closed section. So closed session, action. According to the Brown Act, if there's an item on this agenda and the council makes a reported discussion, the public has a right to comment at this time.
I said, go ahead.
It would be appropriate for him to speak if he wants to.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. At no time have you discussed this proposal in public. Obviously, the decision was made to make an offer on 10 acres of land that you can't even -- that is illegally able to be subdivided. You can't even subdivide that land. But we'll talk about that on Item 16. But I'm wondering, when you made the decision to go into closed session to talk -- to give your town manager and your town attorney a legal authority to make an offer on this land?
We never made an offer on the land, Frank. You want me to read the statement again?
No, I just read your agenda. You were given direction to your mayor -- I'm sorry, to your manager and your town attorney for possible purchase of this land. It's right on the agenda.
No, I said there was no action and no direction was given to staff. I just read a statement.
I understand. You should have made this discussion public prior to.
Frank, thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Very good, very good.
Thank you. So, thank you.
When will this Town Council become transparent? That's what I'm wondering. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. We're not taking comment on this item.
Well, Frank is right since you did bring something up. But I was going to clarify something because I'm the first one to hold your little feet to the fire. And as much as I like Frank's interest here, correctly stated, as long as you say that there is no direction given to staff, which is an expenditure of public funds, you do not need to disclose the subject of the matter. But if there is any sort of direction to staff, even like having -- have been to write a response upon request, and if you look at 6250 through 6270, you'll find that you are required to provide that. The only exclusions are, A, not the negotiation for the property, but the price; B, if there's a reasonable concern for flight process. And there's a third little exemption, which I don't recall that you could probably ask your attorney.
So, Michael McIntosh, we do have an attorney who advises us on these matters, so I appreciate your comments.
But sometimes, to Frank's statement, you aren't that transparent. And I would like to see more transparency because I feel it'd be more engaging for the community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're not taking comment on this item. Let's move forward with the agenda. I'd like to have a motion for approval of the agenda and affidavit of posting.
Mayor, I would like to make one small change to the agenda. And I would ask that we move Item 13 to the end of the agenda because it's not as urgent as the other matters.
So just, Councilmember Lacks, this is a -- Okay, so can we please remove barking dogs? This is a consent calendar item, so we'll take that up at that time. It's on consent.
Oh, it's on consent, okay. All right, thanks.
So I'd like a motion for approval of the agenda and affidavit of posting.
So moved.
Second.
So that was Vice Mayor Goddard and Second Reed. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Meeting protocol. The mayor shall maintain order at the meetings. The council and the audience are expected to refrain from using profane language and are ridiculing the character or motives of council members, staff, or members of the public, and to maintain the standards of tolerance and civility. Please turn off all cellular phones or place in the silent mode. The Town Council will review the agenda at 10:00 PM to ascertain which items, if any, will be continued to another meeting. Any matter not started by 11:30 PM will be continued to an adjourned or regular council meeting unless the council votes to suspend this rule. So first, we have a presentation. It's a plaque from the National Fire Protection Association for certification of the Manor Hill Firewise Neighborhood. So we do have quite a long meeting, Todd, and we appreciate you being here, but we would appreciate brevity.
Sounds good. I'm Todd Landau. I'm the executive coordinator for Fire Safe Marin, a nonprofit which coordinates wildfire safety, preparedness, prevention, and education in Marin for the last 29 years. We administer the Firewise USA program in Marin. This is a national recognition program run by the National Fire Protection Association. It's a community organizing, grassroots organizing framework for neighborhood-level preparedness, education, fuel reduction, and wildfire prevention activities in general. And I'm proud to say that Marin County is the fastest-growing county in the nation in this Firewise USA program. We currently have 39 recognized sites. We have 46 sites which have applied for, so there are seven communities waiting for their recognition. And one of our most recent -- recently-recognized communities is one of two in Fairfax. Cascade Canyon was the first recognized Firewise site in Fairfax last year. And Manor Hill, I'm proud to say, was recognized at the end of April by the National Fire Protection Association for their preparedness efforts. This is an ongoing activity. It's going to take, you know, a community involvement from here to fore. As long as we choose to live on Manor Hill or in Fairfax or in places that are threatened by fires, this effort's going to be ongoing. So I'd like to present the committee, the Firewise Committee for Manor Hill, Yvonne Roberts, Elizabeth Baker, Helen Faust, Leslie Emmons, Margaret Yates, John Reed, Bruce Ackerman, Sharon Berman are the Firewise Committee. I'd like to present you with a plaque from Fire Safe Marin and the National Fire Protection Association. And one of two signs, which we'll be asking the town, if we can hang on signposts at the entrances and exits to the community to recognize -- their recognition as part of the Firewise USA program. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you so much. And we are looking for block captains. So that's people that live in the neighborhood. We have 450 homes and we need to recruit people to help get to know their neighbors so that we know if there's anybody who needs help, extra help, in the event of a fire.
So Todd, could you also mention how many communities in Fairfax are working towards Firewise?
Yes. So we've submitted an application for Deer Park. They should hear just about any day now whether the application was approved. The Canyon Village and Meadowlands of Marin have joined forces. They're going to create one large Firewise site. The Miranda Neighborhood, San Gabriel, are working to organize right now. Forest Avenue is working to organize. And a couple of communities that are straddling the border of San Anselmo and Fairfax neighborhoods. I'd love to work with any of you who are interested in this program. There are significant insurance benefits to your community. And the strong benefit of the knowledge that Firewise communities are shown with some sound, peer-reviewed science to be more likely to survive wildfires.
Todd? I -- you need a huge amount of acknowledgement because every time a new neighborhood rings the bell, here's the man who answers the door and has helped us and guided all of these communities in Marin County through this process, pretty much single-handedly, with a great team. But he shows up. He's the guy to know. And I just really want to express our appreciation as a town for you.
And just to add, am I correct? I heard at a recent meeting with Katie Rice that Marin County has the most Firewise communities in the state?
Marin has the most Firewise communities in the state. We're the fastest-growing county in the nation. And I expect by the end of 2019, we will be the -- we will hold the record for the most-recognized Firewise communities in any county in the United States. We're -- right now, believe it or not, it's a county in Alabama that has the most-recognized sites. And we're on a path to beat that by the end of this year. I want to add one thing that I forgot. One of the ways that we support Firewise communities through Fire Safe Marin is through the acquisition and management of grants for large projects, fuels management projects. We were awarded in early May, $1 million grant, the largest grant in the history of our organization, for fuel reduction on roadside vegetation in eight communities, all on the east slopes of Mount Tams, from Corder Madera to Fairfax. Fairfax will see work in three neighborhoods starting this fall and extending through the fall of 2020. You're going to see in Deer Park, Cascade Canyon, and Manor Hill, in each of those communities, 30 to 60 days of tree company crew work doing contract labor alongside road sides to open up evacuation routes to reduce the amount of vegetation that you might be exposed to burning while evacuating. Our goal is to improve evacuation routes, improve your ability to evacuate, and improve the ability of firefighters and fire engines to access wildfires. So that work will be starting this fall. That work is only focused on communities that are actively engaged in the Firewise USA program. So to access these kind of funds and get the support from Fire Safe Marin, you really need to participate in this program.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Todd. And thanks to all our communities either seeking Firewise status or already there. So thank you very much. So announcements. Vacancies on boards and commissions. Applications are available at Town Hall and on the Town website. For more information, contact the Town Clerk or visit www.townoffairfax.org. The Climate Action Committee, there's up to three vacancies. The Open Space Committee, there's two vacancies. The Tree Advisory Committee, there's one vacancy. The Fairfax Food Pantry is Saturdays, 9 to 11. The Fairfax Community Church, 2398 Sir Francis Drake Boulevard. Volunteers are needed. Just one of the things that I want to remind folks of is we have a lot of volunteers in the morning when it first opens, but we don't have many for when it shuts down. So if you're interested in volunteering, we're happy to have you at any time. But if you can come around 10:30, 11 o'clock, that would really help people close it down. So thank you. And then Chipper Days, 2019, July 13th and 14th, July 20th and 21st, July 27th and 28th, August 3rd, August 10th. Please check the Town website for details about location and pickup service. And last year, you probably know that we did some pickups in some neighborhood and we'll be doing that again. Also, I want to remind folks Fairfax Festival and Eco Fest is this weekend. And so we'll be having a parade in the morning on Saturday and then Full Speed Ahead. So we look forward to seeing most of you there. Another thing to point out, the goats are coming. And I want to point out, I live in Canyon Village, which is working towards Firewise status. But last year, we had goats. And this year, our goats will be starting to come on Friday. And they'll be staying for about a week. But one of the things that really helped us last year is we had a massive fire right on my street where I live. Three places were taken out. And the fire went up the hills. We lived next to open space. And because the goats had been there, the firefighters were able to put out the fire very quickly before it went up those hills and took off throughout Fairfax. So it's a really good thing to do. So any other -- Renee has a comment?
Yeah, and just so folks know, you can trace the migration of the goats because they will be up on the upper ridges above Cascade Canyon as well. And then they're moving around. They're still hungry. I also wanted to just let you know that this is this year's signature collectible, reusable stainless steel, all healthy, all Enviro cup for this year's Fairfax Festival. We were -- we received donations for 1,000 of these cups this year. You got to get them while they last and you will be able to refill your beverage of choice at the Fairfax Festival. It says Sweet Home Fairfax. So get them while they last.
Very nice. Okay, so anybody else say none? Open time for public expression. This is to address the council on matters not on the agenda. Please approach the podium and state your name and address, which are optional. Depending on the number of speakers, individuals have two to three minutes to speak, four to five minutes if representing a group. The council is not permitted to take action and state law strictly limits the right of the council to discuss any unagendized item unless it can be demonstrated to be of an emergency nature or the need to take immediate action arose after the posting of the agenda. I just want to ask, how many people want to speak in open time? Well, I think we can try to get by with the three minutes for individuals. And if you're representing a group, only one gets to talk for five minutes. Other people can speak for three. So with that, we'll go ahead and get started.
Good evening, Council. Jody Timms, Cascade Drive, and your representative to the Commission on Aging. Just want to do my quick update for you. The Commission on Aging has its monthly meeting tomorrow at Margaret Todd in Novato. The subject is family caregiving, which is a growing need. And if you're interested, go on up for that, 10 to 11. Also, the Fairfax -- Age Friendly Fairfax will be in the parade and tabling at the festival in the pavilion. So if there's folks listening who have questions about services or things that are available for older adults in Marin, please stop by our table. Happy to chat with you. There are two new flyers we've been working on that are out and about. One is list all the senior discounts that businesses in Fairfax offer. And the flip side of that, as soon as we get it printed, will be emergency preparedness tips, particularly for seniors. The first one, the first of the six tips being, please get to know your neighbors. So if you're not a senior and you have a senior neighbor or an older adult neighbor, please reach out to them, see how they're doing, what kinds of needs they might have so that you could help support them in the event of an emergency. The forum that Age Friendly Fairfax does each Fri -- each month, once a month on the fourth Friday. This last one on May 24th was on emergency preparedness. We didn't have a great turnout. So just a couple of folks showed up, but Maggie Lang was there and gave a great presentation. This month, on June 28th, at the library from 1:00 to 2:00, that's the fourth Friday, the subject is getting around in Marin. So it has to do with all the transportation options for older adults, including Marin Transit, Catch a Ride, other ride services like Marin Villages and Whistle Stop, Golden Gate Transit, Clipper Cards, technology tips for transportation, how to use connect -- how to use Lyft, Uber, and other means to get around. So if you have any of those needs or you know someone who might, please come to the library on the 28th. We have our once-a-month breakfast with friends. That will be this, starting for the next six months, at Barefoot Cafe back there. So June 19th at 9:30. And then our age-friendly yoga classes continue at the Fairfax Library and at Bennett House. So thanks very much.
Thank you, Jody. Hi there. Hello, Mark.
Hi, everyone. Mark Vendetti, Muriel Place in town. And I'd like to give some belated thanks to Fairfax Public Works for an amazing job they did in our neighborhood over this last winter. There was -- for those of you who might not remember, there was an amazing storm January 18th. And we just happened to be looking out the window of our house in time for the lightning bolt to come down and strike the transformer on Scenic. And there was this giant blue flash and after that, the power went out. And some of us were without power for like over a week. I have a like a before and after.
You can give that to the Town Clerk.
They cleaned up after about a 200-year-old oak tree fell right over the street and took out part of the bridge railing and made an incredible mess of that intersection. And when you see it now, it is amazingly beautiful. So I know that Tommy Bruce had someone do that and Rudy and there's just so many other people that work in that department and don't necessarily get kudos all the time. But I'm sure they hear about it when it doesn't go right. So I'm just -- I just want to give them some appreciation and love. So thanks very much.
Just a note, we have a couple of Johns in the group. There's two fellows named John, Tom, and also Rudy. Our Public Works, along with Mark Lockaby, who assists. So thank you, Mark, for your --
And they may be watching right now.
Great job, team. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Yes, thanks. And thanks for acknowledging them because these guys work so hard and they do so much with so little resources. And they also removed a tree in front of my house that fell in the storm. And they had it removed within a matter of hours, this huge tree blocking the tree, I think during the same storm. So they do a really great job in responding to emergencies. So thanks for the knowledge.
Thank you. Hi.
Police also blocked off the streets in a really timely manner and just the whole thing was handled amazingly well.
Great, thank you.
It's a team effort.
Let's move through open time, please. We've got a long meeting ahead of us.
I'm Sherab Bogan. If Fairfax needs to raise money in Marin County, we should go after illegal second units because they haven't been inspected and therefore they might start a fire if the electrical is not done according to code. Owners are cheating who have illegal second units because they're not paying their fair share and possibly dangerous. Owners of illegal units should pay a substantial fine and could be given the option to obey, to get rid of the second unit or to try to legalize it at the owner's expense. What that would accomplish if the lot were legalized is that the owner would be reassessed property taxes at current value, which would raise money for Fairfax and Marin County. To have more enforcement, more staff could be hired by Public Works and the Building Department. The penalties and related fees could pay the salary of extra staff. Fairfax would be safer because inspections guarantee less danger of fire and other possible health issues related to water and sewer. Plus, there would be less parking issues because owners are required to provide parking. So, yes, thank you.
Just so you know, we did an amnesty ordinance for second units to bring them in from the cold. And we waive penalties and charge 50% of the fees for all second units. We're trying to get people to come in from the cold voluntarily. But good points. Thank you. Next speaker?
Mallory Geithheim, Willow Avenue. Thank you for the straw thing. Is it happening? The plastic straws?
July 17th.
Yes. Okay. And clearing the little paths that go from street to street as evacuation paths for pedestrians? Is anything going on with that? Do we have any inspiration?
So we're not responding to things. Let's take it offline.
Okay. And the other thing that -- two other issues. I was at Fairfax Lumber today, so there is no roundup, which is good. But they're still selling those, the rat poison, even though they're in little plastic boxes. We don't need more plastic boxes. But there are birds that can get into that and there are cats that can get into that. So I would like that to be banned in Fairfax. And the other thing is the coffee roast -- the places that do take out coffee, they never ask you if you want a cup to stay in. And there's plastic on those cups and they're just giving them, whether you stay in the restaurant or not, you just get a takeout cup. I would like that to be addressed. And I would like people who are not taking out coffee. First of all, I would like a more expensive amount for those cups. Secondly, I would like people who are serving to ask people if they're staying in and if they're staying in, to give them regular cups and not takeout cups.
Thank you.
Thanks.
July 17th. Please come back and we will be discussing this.
Next speaker?
Michael Dunn, 18 Wood Lane. Like Frank stands for the trees in Fairfax, I stand for the herb. Thirty-three years ago, in this very room, in this very town, became the first suburban area in the planet to legally sell marijuana. From decades past, Fairfax has always been the de facto California nucleus for the cultivation of the finest bud from west Marin.
So sir, there's going to be a cannabis item on the agenda, so we're not taking up items that are already on the agenda during open.
Is this on the agenda tonight?
We have cannabis on the agenda. I think it's Item 15.
So I come back then? Is that what you say?
Yes.
Great.
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Walter Vernon. I am a 25-year resident of Marin County. Eight years ago, I escaped San Anselmo and I live in Fairfax now, in Fawn Ridge. Six months ago, you appointed me to the Climate Action Committee for the town. And so I'm here representing the Climate Action Committee. Two months ago, I was here and announced that with our most recent greenhouse gas inventory, the Town of Fairfax had achieved its 2020 goals three years early by 2017, which was really good. Last month, the Town Council passed the climate emergency resolution aiming zero by 30, right? Zero emissions by 2030, which is a daunting goal. This year, I just sort of wanted to report on our progress so far. We've been able to get a donated energy audit of all of the town buildings from a professional engineering firm. We have proposed a project to -- We have proposed a project to invest in energy efficiency measures in the town, which will put money back in the pockets of the town from 2020 onward, which is very good. We're in the process of updating our climate action plan, looking at that zero by 30 goal, and how do we get there? We're looking at how to get, ways to get the town operations to climate neutral. I'm actually aiming at zero by 20. I think that's very feasible, partly through some ideas around internal prices on carbon and using the funds to help the people of Fairfax invest in their own ability to reduce their carbon footprint. We're currently working with the California Energy Commission, the California Building Standards Commission, looking to adopt the 2020 Title 24 energy regulations, plus some potential stretch goals, and ultimately, looking at how to decarbonize the town buildings. We're working with Sustainable Fairfax, looking at ways to reach out and engage the community to build support for this work. And I think it's important, in this time of climate crisis, other people are talking, the people of Fairfax are showing the way, and I thank you for the opportunity to serve.
Just a suggestion, I hope you're coordinating with the town manager on this.
Yep.
Okay, great. Thank you, Walter.
Thank you, Walter.
Of course.
Well, how would someone from the public who just got very excited with all you had to share, learn more about it?
They could join the Climate Action Committee, which we have up to three vacancies.
Or they could just come. They don't have to join.
Or they could just go to the— It's a public meeting, so people can just come.
Yep.
So our meetings, plug for the Climate Action Committee, the second Tuesday of the month, generally in the youth center next to the fire department, 7 o'clock. And, yeah, come on, come on down.
And those meetings are always posted on the town calendar.
Thank you, Walter. Appreciate your enthusiasm. Next speaker?
Richard Applebaum, 61 Woodland. I'm going to put this in the form of a, kind of a question, and in the spirit of trying to find some kind of creative solution, but I've used this term disconnect before, and I feel like the back-and-forth of Frank tonight was reflective of that again. And one of the problems for us citizens is that there are many people in this town that have been here a long time, they have historical memory, former council members, mayors, other participants in various things, and information is proffered, and other citizens, we learn and we hear things, and things go out on social media, and we're looking at information, and there seems to be this disconnect. And yet, this format doesn't really foster the ability to have dialogue. We come up, we say what we say, you listen, and then things go on. And so, you know, nobody wants this constant contentiousness. I don't, I don't relish this. I'm not coming up here trying to attack everyone and, you know, impugn who you are as people and whether you love your town, but there's a lot of things that are very concerning, and the issues that come up have to do with, are we following our own rules? And are things being done in the way they're supposed to be done? And is there something that was recorded many years ago in minutes, or in rulings, or whatever, that are not being followed now? And I don't know how we get to someplace where we can have sort of an open dialogue, where we can kind of get to some clarity on this. And so that's why, when people keep using the word transparency, it's not that we're saying you're all a nefarious cabal in a back room plotting the demise of our town, but we don't know how to make sense out of this. And so, I'm putting it in question form, not in attacking form, to simply say, is there something can we do? I've mentioned on social media before, is there a possibility of something like a town hall, something that's not legal, lawyers don't run it, doesn't follow certain procedures, where we can just have sort of an open conversation and get some clarity on some things, so that we can kind of, maybe we're really more all closer together than we realize we are. But when knowledgeable people who have served a long time are saying, this is, this is, this is, this, and you guys are like, I don't know what you're talking about, and we can't really address that, and now's not your time, you can't speak now, it's just very, very frustrating and disconcerting, and I feel like in a town this small, we have 5,400 registered voters, let's figure this out somehow, so we can, you know, we're not all going to agree on things, we're going to have a disagreement tonight, you know, about this open space and stuff, but that's okay. But it's more this feeling of like, what's true, and getting to the truth of things. So, that's all I had to say, and, you know.
Thank you, Richard. One of the things we're trying to do is be more proactive on communication, and we do have a staff person trying to work on that, but we'll consider your comments as well. Next speaker?
Good evening, Rick Hamer. I'm here to say, three minutes is three minutes, not two to three minutes. Three minutes is three minutes. I want to hear, and I want the Town Council to hear, what the people of Fairfax have to say about matters which are important to them, and that's three minutes. I don't think that a discretionary change of three minutes' worth of audience to the Town Council turns to two minutes based on discretion. I think that it should be three minutes, period, for any time for public speaking, because we prepare for this, it is important to us. Please respect that. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris?
Open time?
Yes.
Town councilor, staff, and fellow Fairfaxians, I'm Christopher. I live on Canyon Road. About a month ago, I submitted a request to the town in writing for additional bike parking for Fairfax Festival, because we ran out of space last year and forgot to ask. So this year, I remembered. So I submitted the request, and then the police department said it wouldn't be safe for us to take over the handicap spot, because I couldn't figure that out. And as the founder of the Bike Coalition and working on Fairfax Festival for over 30 years with the bike parking and everything, worked on it every single year, Deb Bousman said, "Don't take no for an answer," so I, now I'm the bad guy, of course, as always. The second thing is, when we're working over there by Gestalt House in Mono Lane, it's really hot and sunny over there, it's just all concrete and asphalt, and the repack mosaic planter is awesome, right? But there's no tree in it. That's okay. So my idea for future is, under open time, no action to be taken, but I want to introduce the idea, is to plant some trees at the end of each parking space in the mono lot, like adjacent to Mono Lane, because then eventually they'd get big enough to try to moderate the climate over there. It's really like a furnace, and we're there all day, every day, two days every June, so that's pretty tough. So I'm hoping at some point, it's about a dozen spaces at the end of each parking lot space, there's enough room, and it'll be safe. And the third thing is, congratulations on finishing up the parcade redo. It looks great. Too many handicap spots, as usual, but hey. So, bottom line is, during the project, the Chamber of Commerce Welcome to Fairfax sign got moved, and that was a sign that we, Rich Betamonte got the Chamber Countywide Award for, it was a really beautiful project, and when we dug the post hole, we found old railroad spikes and stuff like that, it was really cool. But the bottom line is, that sign was situated to within an inch of not interfering with drivers' line of sight or pedestrian safety or anything like that. And we went through Park and Recreation Commission to have it cited, we followed all the protocols, processes, and now the sign has been moved up the road on Drake, and so you can't, you know, you just drive right by it. So I'm hoping that in time, the passage of time, we can get the sign put back to the end of the parcade where it belongs, so people can actually see it. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I may, Garrett, we talked about that briefly when it got moved. I would like to request, if the council's cool with it, that we put that back. It's just better for people to see it from all directions in that original spot.
I think we could talk about it in another meeting. The whole reason was a traffic safety issue in terms of sightlines, because what happens is, there's the sign, and then this bottom of the sign gets filled in with a banner, and then drivers can't see the crosswalk.
Okay, well, let's just take, let's take a look at it.
We consulted with the Chamber, and they were okay with the move, but we can come up something different.
If we could take a look, that'd be great.
We've gotten a lot of complaints about the sightlines there, but, and also, Chris, we can't take over a handicap space. We need that for people that need those spaces, so appreciate all the hard work that you guys do during the festival. Thank you.
You're welcome. And thank you for your suggestion on the trees. I think I'm going to follow up on that. I think that's a great idea.
At one point, Mike Hazel said he, before he had health problems, he said he'd have to pick up a truck with a generator and a jackhammer and saw and come out and cut each hole for 100 bucks, so it's possible to do it in a bargainish way, just so you know.
Thank you. Anybody else wanted to speak in open time? Lisa?
Yeah, Lisa Blash, 22 Pacheco Avenue. I just wanted to follow up on something that Mark Medetti said. I also had a really good experience with Public Works, and I think it was Tommy Bruce came and fixed the curb in front of our house that had been run over so many times by trucks that it had broken off, making it possible for someone to fall right into the storm drain, and he came and fixed the whole curb, and he was very cheerful, it took him a couple of days, and so that was very much appreciated. We got really a quick turnaround on that safety hazard. And I also wanted to just put a shout out to whoever planted those flowers along Center on the way to the Good Earth. That has been such an unexpected delight that's kept going and going, and I have no idea if that's the town or somebody else, but like, a couple of us have noticed it, and we just don't know where it came from. The final thing I just wanted to say tonight, I really appreciate that Fairfax is such a wonderful town, and, you know, we're kind of following up on a gratitude theme that we had last month, but I'm also really appreciative that our citizens are as engaged as they are, and I think that's a really wonderful thing, and I think for all of us being engaged, we also have to think about how to engage and be passionate without also, you know, being mean, and so I think we're all working on that, and I'm appreciative of Richard's comments about looking at ways for public engagement so that we can speak to one another across differences better. And just wanted to remind people that it is almost, I don't know how many years ago it was, but several years ago during the Fairfax Festival, we had a history night, and we had those wonderful films here in the town hall, and Mr. Shapiro was here, and I can't remember the exact context except that I think he was asked what were his suggestions for how future Fairfax should deal with the pressing issues of the day and the future, and I think his only suggestion was that we be kind. And somebody gave me these little buttons that say, "Be kind." So I just wanted to bring up that memory from a few years ago, that it's something to remember about dealing with our issues, that we're all trying to make our point, but we also want to be kind. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
Hi, I'm Wendy, and for now, I live in Fairfax for the past almost 11 years, and I have been looking for a place to live, which is pretty impossible these days, and just thought that I would announce it here, because I thought I would, and especially since somebody brought up the issue of second units. I just want to say that I know that we're losing people in our town, including possibly me, and I don't know where I'm going to go. And also, when Chris brought up Deb, I just want to say that today would have been Deb's 50th birthday if she was still here with us. So, happy birthday in her memory.
It would have been my father's 102nd birthday, if he were still here. I didn't realize they shared a birthday.
Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak in open time? Seeing none, bringing it back. So we have the consent calendar before us. Is there anything that anybody would like to pull? I have a comment on one item.
I have a comment on item 10, and I believe someone who wants to make a brief comment as well, in the public.
No, I don't, Mayor. I mistakenly thought item 13 was not on consent, so.
Okay. So, why don't you make your comment, and then I'll make my comment, and then we'll ask if members of the public have any comments.
Okay. Well, my comment really is that I wanted to just address number 10, which is that we are, we have before us a resolution calling for the federal government to pass a Green New Deal. And last weekend, we had a Green New Deal town hall that was run by one of the young, one of the young women in this room right now. It was put together by the Sunrise Movement, and they packed the house in here, and the energy and enthusiasm that was generated cross-generationally for the ideas, for the action that they are ready to take and are poised to launch into is infectious and requires our support from every level, from whether it be our community, to our local governments, to our state, and then our work to resolve that this federal government look closely at the resolution for a Green New Deal. So when the public comment time takes place at the end of consent, I think Zoe Vavreck has a few words to share with us.
Okay, thank you, Renee. Just one item on item seven, the continuing resolution. On that item, in the actual resolution, it has the wrong date for the public hearing for the budget, which is tonight, June 5th. It has June 6th, so if we could change that. So, nobody here wants to pull an item from the agenda. Did anyone in the public want to make a comment on the consent calendar, or ask for something to be pulled from the consent?
Yes, Mayor. Frank Agar, 13 Men Way. On your consent calendar, item number six, there are five resolutions, and in years past, when we adopted a resolution, we put the dollar amount of the tax, for instance, the special municipal services tax for the upcoming year, there's no dollar amount shown. In fact, there's no dollar amount on any of them. If the public at least could read how much each of those taxes are.
That's a good point. It is on the resolutions themselves, but I will ask town staff in the future to put these on the agenda, so it's clear.
And maybe you could just tell folks tonight what the dollar amounts are.
I'll go through those in just a second. So, just so you know, Frank, I'll do this right now. So, the first resolution sets the special municipal services tax for 2019-20, that is 195 per unit. The second resolution sets the utility users' tax for 1920, and that's 4% tax rate, same as last year's assessment. The previous one is the same as the previous year. The resolution's setting the pension tax rate to support Fairfax pension obligations for 1920. The tax rate is .091% per $100 assessed valuation. Again, it's the same as the last year's assessment. The next resolution is setting a fee for the purpose of funding local stormwater pollution prevention activities for 1920. The tax rate is $15 per runoff unit, again, same as the last year's assessment. The resolution's setting the tax rate for the general obligation bonds, these are Measure K bonds that were issued, I think, back in the early 2000s, and this tax rate is .0250% per $100 assessed valuation. It's 9.1% lower than last year's assessment. So thanks for those points, Frank. Okay, next speaker? And we don't usually accept a lot of comments, so if we could keep this brief?
Okay. Hi, hello, Fairfax Town Council. My name is Zoe Vavreck, and I want to thank Renee for that really nice introduction. I'm a senior at Drake High School, and thank you so much for all you guys do for the community. I want to start off by explaining who my team is and what the national collaborative movement I'm a part of is. This powerful movement to support a federal Green New Deal is led by iMatter and Sunrise. As both of these nonprofits have worked for years with the same goals, empowering youths to become climate activists in their communities to stop climate change and create millions of jobs in the process, they decided to collaborate on the Green New Deal high school campaign. Our mission with this presentation resolution is to mobilize our communities to confront the urgency of the climate crisis and build political will in local governments to support a federal Green New Deal. Senator Ed Markey and Representative Alexandria Cazu Cortez released on February 7th of this year a resolution recognizing the duty of the federal government to create a Green New Deal. This federal Green New Deal legislation would create a detailed mobilization plan to eliminate greenhouse gas emissions by 2030, invest in communities on the front lines of poverty and pollution, and guarantee a good job to anyone who wants to make this happen. Starting in February of this year, I was a part of a team of local youth from six different high schools in the area that worked on a campaign to persuade the Marin Board of Supervisors to pass a symbolic resolution in support of the federal Green New Deal. On February 26th, we presented on the agenda, and the resolution was unanimously passed. In addition, just a few weeks ago, on May 24th, the San and Selmo Town Council passed a similar resolution with us, with only one vote against it. These resolutions are purely symbolic, binding the signs to local governments to no contracts, only to use their local voices to strengthen the suggestion to enact this resolution on the federal level. If the Fairfax Town Council called on the US government to pass a resolution-based Green New Deal, it would be a powerful symbol of local political will. local political will for the Green New Deal. In addition, if the Fairfax Town Council passed this resolution, it would build strong support among the 83 national groups that have either passed resolutions like these or are working towards it to show this is what our generation wants and needs. Resolutions have already been passed in Concord, Massachusetts, Brookline, Massachusetts, Madison, Wisconsin, Boston, Massachusetts, and Cambridge, Massachusetts. My team is eager to talk to each and every one of you and explain to you why we believe these resolutions should be passed. Please pass this resolution if you believe in preserving this beautiful earth for my generation and generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you. So next speaker?
Mark Bell, Domingo Avenue. So I'm also was looking at six, and I'm glad that we at least have what the totals are, how they're arrived at. I had some friends move to Fairfax, and they said, wow, you have, this is like, I've never seen so many tax issues on a tax bill before in my life. And so, you know, as we're looking at the special municipal services tax, et cetera, et cetera, this is a comment. You don't think that we need a storefront cannabis place? Quite interesting.
Okay, so we are going to take up cannabis next, I believe. Thank you. So seeing no one else, bringing it back, I'd like a motion for the consent calendar with the change I made in item seven.
I would like to move the consent calendar.
I'll second it, and I just wanted to comment that we also supported the passage of the Green New Deal in the Climate Emergency Resolution, so this will be a second.
Okay, just friendly amendment with the change I made in item seven?
With the change that Mayor Kohler made in item seven.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So that was Vice Mayor Goddard and Second Councilmember Ackerman. Thank you. So moving on, we are now, let me, excuse me just a minute, I have to get some paper moved. There's a lot of paper for these items. Okay. So this is introduced by title, only two ordinances, an ordinance amending Chapter 17.110 and repealing Article 2, Medical Marijuana Cultivation of Chapter 17.38 to adopt zoning standards and restrictions for commercial cannabis uses and cannabis cultivation for personal use, and two, an ordinance amending Chapter 5.56 to regulate commercial cannabis businesses within the town of Fairfax, sequel exempt pursuant to state sequel guidelines and Business and Professions Codes' specific sections. So with that, I'm not sure is Ben Berto, our Planning Director, doing the staff report?
Yes, I am.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. This is the 17th public hearing that Fairfax has conducted on this topic. It's been a long and exhaustive process, and I think what we have before us tonight reflects a lot of effort by many, many people, including your council members. The Planning Commission was also looking at this for many meetings. Ultimately, they were unable to make a recommendation. However, in the course of their seven or eight meetings that they conducted, they provided the input that allowed staff to draft the regulations, which your commission, your council first looked at on May 1st. It's also noted that Fairfax has a moratorium on most cannabis business uses. That is slated to expire permanently on October 31st of this year. In recap of the regulations that we have contained in our two ordinances, and I want to clarify that the direction that staff is listing here, in many cases, was not unanimous on either the Planning Commission or the town council's part. So if there was any inference that this was somehow unanimous direction, we acknowledge and respect that there are diversity of opinions on this topic, and there may be continuing comment from various viewpoints at tonight's meeting. With that said, the direction that we believe we have received from your council includes eliminating the following categories of cannabis uses, and these follow the general categories that the state has set forth in regulating cannabis at the state level. We have eliminated cannabis temporary events, commercial cannabis cultivation, manufacturing of cannabis products, testing laboratories, distribution of those products, and microbusinesses. It's noted that microbusinesses may be revisited at some point in the future. Another direction item was to allow personal cultivation of up to six mature plants. There's a provision in our codes, the proposed codes, that would allow a medical exception for a possibility of up to 10 plants. There's a process that somebody would have to go through to justify that request. We have also created in Chapter 556 a business permitting process that describes in detail what a commercial entity would have to do in order to be considered and approved for that business in the town. We spent some time, and this is work that was done at the last council meeting, in creating varying setback buffer zones for different types of businesses, and that'll be further addressed in this presentation. There's also provisions that address the existing medical marijuana dispensary. At the May 1st meeting, the majority of the council staff believes directed staff to allow the following commercial businesses: medical cannabis storefront retail, and delivery-only adult recreation retail, or any combination of those two, for a total of two businesses.
Just one clarification, along with adult-use recreational delivery, wouldn't it also be medical delivery?
Yes.
Okay, just clarification. Sorry to interrupt.
Thank you. The council directed to not allow adult recreation storefronts in Fairfax at this time.
And that was the majority of the council. I was not one of those.
Thank you. And they directed, a majority, we believe, directed the creation of a 250-foot setback buffer from any tutoring centers to any commercial cannabis business, whether delivery-only or medical cannabis.
And again, I wasn't one of those. Thank you.
Noted. And the remainder of the proposed town code provisions, and we'll get into further detail on some of those, but in general, there was agreement with those as first proposed at the last meeting. Recapping quickly on personal cultivation in a little bit more detail, six mature plants total per property for adult use, and this is at any time, and it doesn't differentiate with somebody's growing indoors or outdoors. It's noted that potentially somebody could get two crops a year, but a maximum of six mature plants at any one time. A maximum of 10 plants possible through the medical exception process. A multifamily property would be limited to six total plants per property. It's noted that this is probably not an issue in terms of count or anything like that, because staff did survey all multifamily property owners, and they all indicated that they would not be allowing such cultivation. The other aspects relating to cultivation is our current code has provisions dealing with buffers, and those would continue to apply. It's noted there would be a 200-foot buffer from schools and daycare centers for outdoor cultivation. An item that was discussed in detail at the last council meeting has to do with locations and buffer setbacks. There was general agreement to only allow medical cannabis storefront retails in the CH and CC zones, and to allow delivery-only retail in the CH, CC, and CL zones. For medical storefront retail, the direction of the council was to allow 600-foot setback from, or require a 600-foot setback buffer from schools, daycares, and youth centers. And at the last meeting, included an additional 250-foot setback buffer from tutoring centers. And I'll be showing the maps that outline these buffers in a moment. For adult-use delivery-only retail, there would be 250-foot setback buffers from schools and a tutoring center, but there's no discussion of a setback buffer from a daycare or a youth And this diagram here shows the location of the commercial area with the listed uses for which varying buffers do or do not apply. For example, the St. Rita School property is the large rectangle in the upper left. We also have the Montessori school site. We have the youth center just down the street here. We have the First Friends.
Laser pointer.
That's right. Which one does the laser? Okay, thank you.
Could you be some kind of...
Please speak towards the microphone, please.
You bet.
Could you explain the colors, because we can't read the...
Sure. The yellow area is the entirety of the commercially-zoned area consisting of the CH, CC, and CL zone districts. The red areas, this is the St. Rita site, this is the community center, aka youth center, that's just down Park Road here. This is the First Friends Montessori, which is considered a school. This is the tutoring center, and this is the Caterpillar Academy daycare center. So those are the locations at this time for which we have varying buffers. This would be the buffers as written in the currently proposed ordinance for a delivery-only business. So what you can see is it would apply to, the 250-foot buffers would apply to the St. Rita's School property site, and to the First Friends Montessori site, as well as the tutoring center. And this was a change that was directed, we believe, by a majority of the council at the last town council meeting.
Excuse me, is the Montessori ones that you're speaking of the one that's located right behind Perry's Bar?
That's correct. The question was, is that the Montessori school behind Perry's Bar? And that's correct.
Yeah, it's awfully close to, excuse me, the bar.
We're not taking comments at this point. I understand that, but we can't, I realize this is frustrating, but you will have to wait.
I was just...
I know. But you will have to wait. You aren't recorded, so you will have to wait till we give comments. Thank you.
My apologies for...
And Ben, if you can, because these maps are hard for people who haven't seen them, if you can do your best to really explain them, that would be great.
Okay, yes, I'll do so. This is the buffer for the medical storefronts, the other commercial cannabis business allowed. And what you can see is that for the school sites and the youth center sites, those would have a full 600-foot buffer. So you have the St. Rita School site, and that distance out to the edge of the blue-green represents a 600-foot distance. So that is the distance that would be required for any commercial business, any commercial medical storefront to locate. And as you can see, that pretty much eliminates the western portion of the commercial area of the downtown in combination with the youth center here on Park Street, that you would not be outside the buffer zones until you were down on Center and Sir Francis Drake, roughly near the Beach House. On the east side, we have the reduced buffer for the tutoring center located at 1612 or 13 Sir Francis Drake, and that's a 250-foot buffer. So there's the tutoring center, and there's the buffer. That would eliminate any of the businesses, for example, from locating in the proximity of the Willow and Pacheco intersections on Sir Francis Drake. And then you have the Caterpillar Academy, and that's got a wider 600-foot buffer as a daycare. And so that would be the 600-foot buffer, and so pretty much the eastern side of the town would be prohibited from any commercial delivery, or any commercial medical storefront.
Ben, excuse me. So you didn't call out the ballpark or the pavilion as youth center? So pavilion is a youth center?
The pavilion is a youth center. The ballpark is not considered a youth center.
But it's within the buffer of the, yes, that's okay. I just wanted to make sure that wasn't left out.
Yeah. So recognizing that this was something that was directed to be changed at the last council meeting, and that there may be need for additional clarification or direction from the council, the question would be, should a setback buffer be required for a delivery-only business? It's recognized as something that is not open to the public, that there's less impact, for example, on these youth uses and youth locations in town. Another question would be if a setback buffer should be required, and as is proposed in the regulations for schools and tutoring centers, should it be also required for youth centers and daycare centers? Thirdly, should a setback buffer distance be 250 feet? At the last meeting, there seemed to be a range of between 200 and 300 feet, and so staff divided it and settled on 250 feet. And lastly, what should the medical cannabis storefront setback buffer distance be to the tutoring center? As recommended, it would be 250 feet. So those are items that we would like to get your councils, either affirmation of the regulations as proposed, or direction on any modifications. Other issues that have come up, that were discussed at the last council meeting that staff did research, include should the town regulate cannabis products in a business? And it's noted that there's concern about certain products that may be attractive to youths and create the problem of accidental dosing kids. When we did the research, we noted that they already have regulations governing packaging, that it's something that should be childproof. It regulates serving sizes. It's generally oriented towards reducing the risk to children from inadvertent consumption of cannabis products. Another issue that was discussed at the council and staff researched was regulating THC levels in cannabis products. It's noted that the THC levels in some of these products approach 90 or 100%. And the question was, is there, would it be desirable to try to regulate that in businesses located in Fairfax? In researching in that, we noted that firstly, the state does not regulate that, except in specific instances, and so they have dictated certain regulations. It's difficult to select and regulate a particular THC level. To a certain extent, there's a degree of subjectivity. In looking at THC levels, there's recognition that for certain medical products, there's greater efficacy that can be achieved in instances for people, for example, with high levels of pain, with higher THC levels in products. So for medical storefronts, there's some definite benefits that can be provided by certain THC, high THC products. And then finally, the concern about regulating a Fairfax business is that the state allows delivery businesses throughout the state, including into Fairfax. If you go on one of the cannabis sites, you can see that there are at least a dozen businesses that do deliveries in Fairfax, for example. And in the county itself, there's close to 10 businesses that have already been approved by other jurisdictions. So the challenge is if Fairfax were to limit THC levels or limit products on its own for our local businesses, it would have a negligible effect on the provision of products in the community insofar as we have multiple businesses doing deliveries into Fairfax, or from which individuals can purchase their products out of town and bring them into town. So that's simply staff's recommendation, and we would appreciate the council's correction.
I think Renee also pointed out at the last meeting that there's only three testing labs right now in the state, so it would also be very difficult to, well, okay, so maybe more. There's very few, and it'd be very difficult to even test them. So I remember that. Thank you, Renee, for bringing that up. So go ahead, Ben.
In looking at other requirements, onsite parking, the onsite parking would be consistent with town regulations. with town regulations, and it would have different requirements for retail and delivery-only. Design review would be required if somebody doing greater than a 50% remodel of a commercial building. The signage, again, would be consistent with town regulations for retail stores, but it is limited to six-square-foot, a six-square-foot window and wall sign. It's noted that if there is a determination or a question about whether a business would generate a certain level of traffic, i.e. 100 additional trips, that staff would require a traffic impact permit just to assess those potential traffic impacts, recognizing that we don't want adverse traffic impacts from any new business, including cannabis. And finally, in terms of review for proposed business, it would initially be reviewed by the planning commission with the final review and decision by the town council. Going into more detail on the business permit process, the business permit would be specific to a particular business so that if the business is sold, for example, or proposed to be sold, that the town would retain the discretion to approve or not approve the new ownership or the conduct of the business under the new ownership. And this is in response to concerns that the town wishes to retain that discretion to individually vet businesses when they either apply for an initial business permit or change that ownership. Initial applications would include a submittal deadline, and it would be reviewed for staff for conformance and completeness. It would then, once there are complete applications, go on to the planning commission, who would score and rank applications, and we would have a proposed scoring system. And they would make a recommendation on qualifying businesses to the town council. The town council would retain the final review and ranking decision-making, and they would have additional points so that effectively they could make that ultimate decision on what businesses would be successful if there were more businesses than, for example, they had numbers of businesses, business applications allowable or business permits allowable, excuse me. And finally, once the town council makes a decision, the cannabis business permit would be processed by staff. Addressing the existing medical dispensary, it's noted that the regulations would allow that to continue. A decision has been made to allow adult-use delivery, so that would be part of the processing of a business permit at that location. And it's noted that they need to apply for that business permit with Fairfax prior to December of this year, or it would have to go through a business permit procedure as outlined under chapter 5.56. Briefly on scoring criteria, because this is not part of the proposed ordinance, this would be adopted separately by resolution, which would allow the town to have more flexibility in future modifications if it was deemed appropriate. But preliminarily, there is a numerical criteria, and this would be to allow the ranking of business applicants. There are three main criteria. The first would be business qualifications and a business plan. The second would be a quality of your operating plan, and the third would be the public benefits. It's noted, under each of the main three criteria, there are numerous sub-criteria which are designed to address details of each primary criteria. Right now, we have 100 points maximum that the planning commission could grant to a particular applicant with 10 additional points allowable or provided at the town council level. And the planning commission would provide the first review, and it would go to the town council for the final decision. So what we have before you tonight are two recommended ordinances that staff believes is consistent with the direction of your council to date. So what we would recommend is that if there are additional council comments and direction that would amount to substantive changes to these regulations, that you provide that direction to staff and that we will take that back and work on those for the next town council meeting scheduled for July 17th. And that concludes the presentation. If you have any questions, staff's prepared to answer.
Thank you. Do any council members just have questions for staff?
I do.
Renee?
Ben, I'm just going to ask these straight down. So first, in the very beginning, you mentioned microbusinesses, and you said that we've, it's been stated that we could review our decision around microbusinesses. What are you referring to? And is that written somewhere?
What that refers to is, we know that there's interest in somebody creating a microbusiness. In the earlier council and planning commission discussions, it was recognized that this is a complex issue. It's vertically integrated businesses that have to have three of the four components that define a microbusiness, and we simply don't have the bandwidth to really go into a detailed discussion on that. However, unlike some of the other commercial categories like manufacturing, where there seemed to be pretty consistent consensus that this is not going to, there's no room in Fairfax for that type of a business, this is something we just don't have the time to do.
I get it, but is it noted in the ordinance?
No.
Okay. So you just added that?
No, this is just a comment.
Okay, just making sure. Then I was wondering if you could actually explain in a way that the public would understand what the status of the Marin Medical Alliance application for a permit is? And when you mentioned December, what are the implications of them having to reapply for a business license? How does that all work?
So that's for adult-use delivery?
That's for their adult-use delivery part.
I can answer the status of the application.
I'm just.
If that's the question.
Right. And what does that mean if by December, which Ben stated, they haven't applied?
Just one clarification, Renee. So last meeting, we gave direction to staff saying if they had not achieved their state license and applied for the Fairfax license, we wanted to limit that. And so what that is doing is saying if by December 31st of this year, they have not applied for the Fairfax license, then they need to go through the process like everybody else, being scored and all that. So they start over.
That's what I wonder.
But just, I'm sorry to interrupt, but you may not remember that from last meeting.
No, I appreciate it. When you speak about multifamily, and you say that none of the landlords have been amenable to the idea of any kind of cultivation, and you're speaking indoors, correct? They have that discretion? They can tell one of their tenants that they cannot grow indoors?
Yes, and at the risk of paraphrasing legal, they have opined that landlords have the ability to determine whether tenants can or cannot grow indoors. The limit on the total number of plants would be to a property, whether indoors or outdoors. But what the landlords reported to us is that they were not in favor of cultivation on their properties whatsoever.
Okay. That's, yeah, that's a complex thing when we talk about multifamily and whether it's depending on the number of units and you're talking about, it would limit the number for the entire development?
That's correct. And given the position of the landlords, there's obviously questions about, hey, there's multiple people, et cetera. But I think, given the fact that a landlord is, have all indicated that they would not support any cultivation, it was felt like this was sort of an area where we could spend a lot of time trying to craft regulations on that, but a landlord isn't going to permit it, so it's kind of a moot point.
So, you know, I'm not trying to throw a million things into the middle of the field here, but you could have a different landlord. So by not looking at those multifamily, Garrett, what?
Sorry. Your ordinance sets a limit of six plants outside.
Outside?
Outside.
But I'm talking about within a tenant's.
Inside, there are allowed six plants unless the landlord says, in an apartment building, technically in the state law, you can have six plants, but if your lease says you're not allowed to grow, if the landlord doesn't allow it, then you can't grow.
Okay. But otherwise, it's six per unit?
That's allowed, well.
If it's allowed by the landlord.
My understanding, and we'd have to go back to it, my understanding is per property. Again, at the risk of us.
That doesn't make sense.
Yeah, we'll check, just give us a second, but you can keep answering questions.
Okay, I think that's important. And, oh, in terms of a traffic impact, how do you go about determining whether it's going to generate more than 100 car trips?
This was originally discussed in the context when we were looking at adult-use retail and, excuse me. And that one would have been likely a certainty, that we would have required a traffic impact permit insofar as it would have been the only adult-use business in Marin, retail business in Marin. In terms of medical, what we would probably do is ask him to do a traffic study initially and look at the existing Marin Alliance business and maybe do a traffic count there to get an idea of what a business in Fairfax that's currently operating as such generates, and then we would probably make a determination on that basis. So we're just looking at what existing businesses seem to generate. We would compare that to what an existing business site currently generates and then make a determination on that basis.
Okay, thank you.
Any, anyone else have a question?
Bruce? So I guess this is a process question, but I would like to offer a suggestion regarding the buffer zones, and I'm wondering whether we should do that after we hear public comment?
After public comment.
Okay, because it would inform the public comment, but we'll wait.
Yeah, I think that would be right. Anybody else have any questions? I have one question if nobody else does. Go ahead.
So we looked it up.
Excuse me?
I'm sorry.
They looked it up.
It's allowed per private residence, which is a unit. So inside, you can grow up to six plants. Outside, per lot, which is the hard parcel, you're only allowed six outside.
So I have a question. Thinking back to the last meeting, there was support among the majority of the council, not me, for adding the tutoring center, the tutoring center, to the buffer zone. And I understand anybody can become a tutoring center by getting a business license. What I recall was it was the tutoring center, even though I do not support that. I think somehow there's been a change to go to any tutoring centers, all tutoring centers. So I'm just questioning where staff came up with that, because I tend to have a fairly good memory, and I remember people saying, add the tutoring center and the tutoring center, not any tutoring center. So if somebody got a business license tomorrow for a tutoring center for three students in a small business, that's going to change the buffer. So I don't think that makes a lot of sense, and I can wait till after we do public comment, but I just want to pose that question because I think that got changed by staff inadvertently.
Well, I concur that I recall it being the tutoring center that we were speaking of, but I think I recall the discussion being, and staff, please correct me or explain, that if we were, let's say, to pass this ordinance as it is now, and then a business were to open consistent with these buffer zones and the ordinance, and then later anything of school or anything were to open, a daycare center, a tutoring center, a youth center, then we don't necessarily throw that business out and say, well, wait a minute, somebody else decided to do a business down the block, so you can't be here anymore. This is based upon the conditions in the town at the time that they apply to open the business. And so that's just the general circumstance that they're.
Okay, so you have a different recollection than I, and that's great. Thank you for adding that clarification. So let's, I believe I've got to open the public hearing. So I'd like to open the public hearing for item 14, which is on cannabis, and two ordinance is, and I'd like to ask how many people want to speak on this topic? We have quite a few, and I know this is not going to be popular, but I'd like to see if we could limit it to two minutes per individual, and then people speaking on behalf of a group, and that would be one person for that group could speak on five, for five minutes, and then if you're an individual and part of that group, you can speak for two. So I know this is complicated, but we do appreciate everyone coming here, and thank you, sir, for coming back.
I didn't leave.
Okay, great.
I've been here longer than most people. 33 years ago, in this very room, this very town became the first suburban area on the planet to legally sell marijuana. For decades past, Fairfax has always been the de facto California nucleus for the cultivation of the finest bud from West Marin. Weed grow the smelliest, tastiest, healthiest, and that's just a plain, simple fact. It has always been that way, and it always will. There are 7,500 citizens in Fairfax, and 6,000 of them voted for the legal weed. Renee, you've done a great job, an amazing job, with the biking community, in which me and my sons are a part of. I ride my Trek 7000 often. In the past 30 years, all of the beautiful trails in my neighborhood, like many, many bikers, I smoke often on the trails, and the community is also, that community is also a historical part of Fairfax, but not as large as the epic, large or as epic as what the marijuana people have, who live here, have done for history. The Constitution limits the government, that's why it works. That's why it works. Making rules is not the answer. Prohibition forces our children to pro take in what is prohibited. We are one community, and the majority of us smoke or use pot in 1,000 different ways. And I will end by praying to the eternal God, whom I love more than anything, please, sir, bless Fairfax with your holy herb. Let's come together on this. Let's get this together. Forget these stupid rules.
Thank you. Just one comment for folks out there. It is illegal to smoke outside, and please don't smoke on the trails because we have wildfire danger here, which we're really sensitive to. So I appreciate your comments. Next speaker, well, let's not do that. We don't want a wildfire.
Hi, my name's Elliot Shatterhouse. I live at 65 Taylor Drive. I'm the partner of.
Could you speak, I know it's hard for tall people, but.
Okay. My name's Elliot. I live at 65 Taylor. I'm the partner of the founder of Fairfax Cares, which applied for a medical cannabis license in February, and we just got our rejection letter today. So one thing I would like is an explanation of what happened to that application between February and today. And the other thing that I wanted to comment on is, after you get through looking at the buffer zone, what's left? Where is there left to have a cannabis business? We just signed a three-year lease at 1620 Sir Francis Drake, right across from the tutoring center. The evening after the lease was signed, this new buffer zone came up. And I don't understand, it's either all tutoring centers or no tutoring centers. Why is it one particular tutoring center? What's the standing that they have? What does it have to do with adult sale of cannabis? When kids are not even allowed into an adult cannabis business to begin with, what's the connection between our site, which is across the street, and you have to wait at the intersection for God knows how long, and anybody who's been there knows, the building is recessed, nobody even knows that building is there unless they were clients of the architects that were there. And all the kids that go to that tutoring center walk right by Don's Market, which is the liquor store. So why is there no objection to that, kids walking back and forth? And the third, and the last thing I want to say is, the owner of the tutoring center doesn't live there. And the upstairs of the tutoring center is a short-term rental. So I'm wondering, why is it safe to prohibit legal adult cannabis sales but allow strangers to live in a short-term rental right above where the kids are learning? That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council people, and staff. My name is Mark Wen, and I represent the musicians' community of Fairfax. Having been a president of an HOA. Having been a president of an HOA, the president of a student body, I have a lot of empathy for the difficulty of what it is you're deciding and the level of detail. I stand before you, asking that you open your hearts to the healing power of people, that having a cannabis dispensary in Fairfax is in alignment with the progressive moral values and enlightened vision of the people of Fairfax. And I ask that you please look deeper into your hearts to do the right thing. And I also want to point out that, as we analyze the possibilities of a greener, less traffic-laden Fairfax, having a local business and not delivery businesses might represent a better carbon footprint. People can walk, people can ride their bikes. And as to the subject of the proximity to educational facilities, honesty and openness with our children provides us the opportunity to educate them as to the cautionary elements of uses of substances and the beneficial elements, and that a fear-based buffer zone does not represent the highest aspirations of truth and education for youth. We're better off being clear with them about what adult behavior is, its ramifications, and the benefits to all of us. Thank you for your time and your deep consideration and your love for this town.
Thank you. So, I appreciate that people want to clap, but sometimes people who don't get clapped for feel bad, and we also want to move through this, so I know if we can hold back on that. Thank you.
My name is Shar Randall. I live at 17 Napa Avenue, basically right behind the Montessori School, which is right behind Perry's Bar, which we can hear, you know, at all hours of the day and night. I have more questions, I think, based on what you guys put on the screen, because I wonder why there would be only two locations when there are how many bars in town, how many breweries in town, how many liquor stores, how many drugstores where little kids can just walk right up and touch the bottles of alcohol? The cartons of cigarettes don't seem to be hidden away, and we live in a climate where it's been proven over and over and over again that pharmaceuticals are killing our children. Alcohol is killing our children. Now, I would like to see some statistics that show why it is that you all seem so concerned to protect our children from a plant, which doesn't show any of the harmful side effects that these other things do, which children are exposed to daily, and no one even bats an eye at that. And why would we have a buffer zone that includes schools and everything right around all these bars and stuff? Where are we going to draw the line? I have never known anyone that died from smoking pot, and I can tell you a long list of people that I know that have died from drug abuse and alcohol. Simple freak accidents, kids out having fun, and boom, lights out. Now, where are our statistics that show that marijuana does the same? Where are they? We need to see some proof as to why these buffer zones are even necessary when we allow alcohol and cigarettes. The surgeon general, like, I actually believe what the surgeon general says.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
If I may. Well, I would, I just want to comment that the buffer zones come from California state law.
I think California should think this whole thing over, not just us.
Yeah, unfortunately, that's out of our...
So, next speaker. So, just so you know, we're changing, we're also, the majority of the council is changing the buffer zones and adding more. We could be less restrictive if we wanted to, but I don't see that direction at this point. Would you like to speak?
Yes, I would. My name is Kai Cooper. I am a student at Sir Francis Drake High School. So, I have done my homework at TLC for, I think that's my third year now. I go there twice a week for no more than one hour each time, doing my physics homework, my math homework, and my Spanish homework. I've had different instructors each year that I've done it, ranging from either a senior in high school at Drake, or a college student, or the owners, actually. Every time I am there, I go straight to the downstairs. I have never been upstairs. I have never seen what it's like up there. I don't even know what it's used for, whether it's a private rental, storage, whatever. Let's see. People don't hang out there. Like, they are welcome to go there and do their homework, but, you know, if they're anything like me, we just show up for an hour, do our homework under the instruction, and we go. Like, the most loitering we do is like five minutes at Good Earth, waiting for a ride from our parents. And in the three years that I have gone there, I have never seen this building once. Like, I've seen the driveway, I've seen the trees, but I've never actually seen the building itself. I've never taken notice whatsoever to it, and I don't think that if there is a cannabis dispensary, that it will affect my daily life or the daily life of the students that go there whatsoever.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next speaker, please. If you feel comfortable doing so, state your name and address.
Hi, I'm Will Ferris. I live on 65 Taylor Drive, and I speak for the students of Drake High School. And I believe that it's, if the main argument that is being placed is that kids are going to get ahold of cannabis if it's in a dispensary, I, I personally, and I speak for many others, don't see that as a possibility, because kids go buy cannabis from dealers on the street that are the same age. They don't, they are, one, scared usually, two, unable, and three, never mind, there's no three.
You're doing a great job.
It does not make sense that the buffer zone for TLC is there, as Kai stated, because the kids usually just go in and out. There's no, there, it's, it's not a youth center, and it's not, it's not a school. It's just a place for kids to do their homework and leave.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Greg Hall, and I've been a Fairfaxian for about 25 years now, and work here locally for the last five. Some of you probably recognize me from various places I've worked, including the Marin Alliance. I helped Lynette open the place, and I've represented them at the Fairfax Festival at their booth, because I've been a part of this movement since Dennis Perone initially started it. And I can tell you right now, you're not going to limit marijuana in this town by limiting the number of dispensaries. All you're going to do is increase traffic. Traffic from delivery companies, where most of people in Fairfax right now get their marijuana from, is delivery, because there's not enough selection, unfortunately, and because there's some issues as far as getting access to weed in California right now. And having delivery companies come in from people who don't know the area or are following navigation is not a good thing for Fairfax. It'd be much better we had a local dispensary there at 1620 to give more access and more variety, so people don't get bored, and it's something you can walk to. To have the Learning Center being the one and only tutoring center that is an issue is kind of funny, because it is basically running a motel upstairs. As Elliot Shadonhouse said, the people that live there do not live there. And if you don't believe me, I'd like to give you all, please, I've got to turn this in here, so they can all get a copy. That is a copy of the Private Investigators' report that shows those people do not live there. It is a motel, it's a B and B. And if this one particular and only tutoring center, these students are so sensitive, they can't have a marijuana-illegal business of a cannabis dispensary across the street, why are they allowed to have a motel with God knows who is living right above them? That really just doesn't make a lot of sense. And as far as issues with the other people, Kathy is willing to work with the local folks. In fact, my optometrist, Dr. Lasson, who's on the corner there, found it really funny that the Learning Center was the issue, because he said, "Wait a minute, didn't they apply for a cannabis permit at one point?" Because I remember objecting to it, because they had no ADA access or ADA parking. You at least have that at 620. You have the ADA access, you have the ADA parking.
Could you wrap it up?
And he, I just want to say, he was originally opposed, but then when he found out that we would be more than helpful to help him with his problem, people drinking in his back area, he thought they might be smoking, and when Kathy offered to have our full-time security go over there and say, "Hey, we'll call the cops if you don't leave," he then signed the petition that you have in front of you.
Thank you.
So, even the neighbors are involved. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Sir, one quick question. Who, who paid for this, looks like a 23-page report by the, by a private investigator?
Elliot, who paid?
Fairfax Cares.
Fairfax Cares paid for it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, Rick Hamer, Fairfax. You know, I just need to mention that I believe that some of the things that came up in the last town council meeting were inventions of the town council with really no substantive basis. There are two of them, which came to point, as I was listening to you in this room. Okay, one of them is the basis for a setback to a tutoring center. Okay, I don't, I don't know what code you're citing on that. I would like to know, and I think that you owe it to us, to tell us where that's written in the code codified in the state guidance, that a tutoring center needs a 250, which is by the admission of our planning department, an arbitrary distance. Secondly, as added at the last meeting, out of the blue, was the 18-year-old accessibility through medical marijuana, which was possibly an issue with, I believe the term was sunset. If there's one reason that we should preserve medical marijuana or marijuana in general, if there's something that should live through this fad of recreational marijuana, if that's what it is, it should be medical marijuana, because there are a number of people, I watched them come and go at the medical dispensary, who need marijuana. It is a medicine, okay? I've seen plenty of recreational marijuana, and, you know, quite honestly, I've never smoked legal marijuana myself. Take that.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. Mimi Newton, Mono Avenue. I'm here tonight in my regular, everyday Fairfaxian capacity, and not as a planning commissioner. I wanted to comment first on the draft resolution that you guys have and the references to the general plan, and how this scheme is going to preserve us from emitting more greenhouse gases. For example, if every Fairfax pot-smoker were to decide to call a different delivery service at a different time of day and have their delivery, how many cars, how many car trips is that going to cause? I think the deliverers are batching their deliveries, so they might not come to Fairfax until they have five orders. But over the course of a month, I would challenge you to figure out how many more car trips we're talking about versus a retail establishment. I clearly disagree with most of you who are against having retail adult-use establishment. I was very clear about that on the planning commission. I think it's a big mistake, and I think it goes against most of the conservation element, most of the climate action plan. I'll point you to goal conservation, goal number one, energy and conservation and climate, sustainable and socially equitable, equitable energy usage in the future. I don't think all these deliveries, and, you know, how many people in Fairfax are over 21 and can call a delivery? Contemplate that number. And how often are they calling a delivery? How expensive is it? How many car rides? CON policy 1-1 is about establishing a climate action plan that includes mobile sources. CON 1.1.2, promote zoning to facilitate live-work situations and minimize motorized transit. CON 1.1.4, participate in statewide and countywide efforts towards energy conservation, renewable energy generation, and greenhouse gas reduction. I don't think having, so there's a lot of people who can't necessarily get a medical card, because they have a federal license, and they might lose their job, if they are uncomfortable with having delivery to their homes and their addresses. And there's a lot of other reasons why people are uncomfortable.
Mimi, could you wrap it up?
Oh, sorry, I can't see the clock. They'll drive long distances, so we also have to take those into account. I point you also, don't out-regulate retail medicinal or adult-use by virtue of buffer zones, and don't include any buffer zones for delivery only.
Thank you. You need to press the button?
Sorry, thank you. Mayor and council members, I'm Art Chartak, with my partner, Richard Rushton. We own 1620 Sir Francis Drake Boulevard. We understand and we approve the medical cannabis sales and delivery at this location. We understand there is a tutoring service across the street, but in the year...
So, don't, don't take that button off.
Okay. In the years that we've been there, we were, we were not really aware of it until we've heard that our building might be rezoned because of it. We have not seen any evidence of children around that area, or groups of children, that's for sure. And we are well set back from the street, as you know, and there shouldn't be any negative consequences of any businesses around there, I don't think. In our discussions with Kathy Taylor, Catherine Taylor, we have, I was very impressed with her straightforward honesty and her careful attention to the details regarding security and safety, which she has planned for this location. There will be no use of cannabis products at this location. We feel it will be a safe and secure place for the sale of cannabis and delivery. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi there. Do I need to hold it down?
No, no, just leave it.
Okay, so I'm Bonnie Zaleski. I'm director of TLC Tutoring and Learning Center, and we are going on 25 years, probably one of the longest-standing businesses around. I would say, today alone, there was anywhere between, I have to look at our schedule, but 20 to 30 kids who came. I see parents here, I see people all around who've attended our center, and it benefited from it. We truly have top of the class, bottom of the class, and the whole gray area in between, so if you're not sure what goes on in a tutoring center, sometimes there's kids who, in particular, for confidentiality, I'm not going to name names or anything like that, but there have been kids who have, you know, crises at home, crises at school, they're struggling academically. For whatever reason, they come to us, and we do our best to help them academically and get back on the road. We've actually helped someone who went on to become a local fire chief in a nearby town. There was even someone who became a local principal here, who's come to our center for various reasons. But the majority of our students are between ages 12 and 17, and that's why I'm here, asking for this buffer zone to protect one of the most vulnerable ages and influential ages in our society. And similar to a school, kids arrive on their own, they get off the bus, they walk, they skateboard, there's piles of bikes in front. I'm sorry, Art, that we haven't met.
So, you need to speak to the council.
Sorry about that. You know, we, we work really hard. I don't necessarily know all the neighbors or all the businesses around, but we're certainly there and making a difference in this community, and I'm asking... And I'm asking for the buffer zone. I'm appreciative that you're considering it, and I think it's very important for these children.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is this on right now? Can't even tell. Hello. Greetings, council, how you doing? My name is Larry, and I just want to speak about my relationship with Kathy and Elliot. They are really, truly good people. I've known them for many, many years, and I think they're bringing a brilliant strategy to Fairfax. I spent a third of my year in Southern California, and there are three dispensaries within two blocks, and they each have armed guards in front of them. It's, it's a multimillion-dollar operation for each, for each one of them, and they've been able to, to come into that city. Now Fairfax can make a better choice, and it can put together the type of dispensary that's truly for more for medicinal rather than just high THC rec. And I've made product, and I've helped, I've helped a lot of people with fibromyalgia, with, with stage two and three cancers with my products. And I know that these are the type of products that Elliot and Kathy want to bring to this town. In terms of helping the musicians, and we've had a lot of musicians leave here over the last 20 years, I've seen a lot of my friends that could not afford to be here, they want to help those musicians to stay here and provide music in Fairfax. I think this is going to happen, and they're going to come in. Someone's going to come in at some point. It's who's going to eventually be here, and that's what we have to concern ourselves with. They've, they've come up with a strategy, and that strategy is to help people. And these kids at Drake are getting pot, and it's not being tested for pollen or molds or pesticides. You don't know what's in it because it's coming from the dealers. And, and I'm not, I'm not advocating that they have that, but I know that they're getting prescriptions for opiates. And if they were getting prescriptions for cannabis and the right terpines and flavonoids were mapped to their genome, they will get true efficacy and they will be healed. That's, that's just a fact, and I've been studying this for many years now. So, so I really, really want to advocate for these two. I think they're bringing a brilliant idea, and if they don't, someone else will. And you don't want armed guards sitting outside on Sir Francis Drake.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lou?
That would be me. Lou Tremaine, 1790 Sir Francis Drake. I work for the Marin Alliance. I served 12 years on your council, and I know what you've been through with this issue. If I was among you now, sitting where Bruce sits, because that's where I always like to sit, I wouldn't vote for this. But at the same time, I understand why you're going to. I think that you have put a lot of thought into this issue. And a lot more thought than a lot of communities in Marin have put into it, and I appreciate that. The fact that you put in the time on this issue is important. That you and I don't agree on the direction you're taking is what it is. This town has had a cannabis industry for a long time. I think that you are enabling a black market that feeds not just marijuana but other drugs to the kids of our community. But I understand that you're in an environment where the state hasn't got its brain together yet on what it's going to do with this issue. And as elected public officials, it's hard to make a decision when you don't know how the terrain is going to shake down, and I get that.
Thank you, Lou.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there other speakers who want to speak on this item? Ms. Taylor?
Hi, I'm Kathy. I live at 65 Taylor, and as you know, we recently leased the building at 1620 Sir Francis Drake with the intention of opening a nonprofit medical cannabis dispensary. We understand that TLC objects to having a medical dispensary at 1620. And normally, when somebody objects to people running an illegal business, neighbors come together and they talk about the situation and just actually talk about how we can work together as a community to make sure that it's safe for our community. We've talked to most of the neighbors over the past few weeks, and although some voiced hesitation and had questions about how we intended to operate a dispensary, we discussed solutions. We talked about ways we could work together to make it a successful business for the community. We've received dozens, if not hundreds, of letters, and I think a lot of them went to your spam folders, but, and signatures of people who are in favor of this happening. And I, I really think that, as it stands right now, that building was the only viable, available building for cannabis dispensary. If we change this zoning and rework it, there will be no viable building in Fairfax. This won't happen. And there are points about having the delivery come in or having teens have access to it. I actually don't smoke cannabis, and one of my motivations for this, in addition to raising money for the community, because this is a nonprofit, regardless of what the town council says and what the lawyer says, we're still going to run it as a nonprofit, where 100% of the profits go back to the community.
Kathy, can you wrap it up?
Yeah, and I'm sorry, I thought I had four minutes as a, as an organization.
No, you're not, you're representing a, a company which is not a group.
Okay. And Fairfax Carrot actually is a nonprofit, and it is a group. So I, I think that having a, a community dispensary as a way to actually embrace a way to make money for the community, because cannabis is coming, and instead of allowing the black market to proliferate, we actually have an opportunity to regulate, to work together, because I actually want to work together so that we can make these decisions that are best for our community. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak on this topic? Could you please come forward? We need to move this along. Okay, Don?
Don Carney, 32 Mountain View Road, Fairfax, 40 years. I want to commend the council on its diligence and doing research, listening to all the opinions, and coming to the conclusion that staff has put before you. As someone who deals with young people who were impacted by marijuana and the families who were impacted, and the fact that these families are devastated by their children being involved with marijuana, losing all motivation, some of them having psychotic breaks, I want to commend you on your protection of the community and the community's children. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. Next speaker, Bridgette?
Hi, I'm Bridgette Clark, and I also wanted to thank you for all of the time you've put into this over the last year and a half in listening and, and educating yourselves. And I would agree that it is tricky because of the way that things are regulated. One of the reasons why I am in favor of, you know, being cautious is that it's a cash-only business, and it brings on, you know, potential issues, being a cash-only business, that, you know, hopefully that will be worked out on a federal level to make it so that, you know, we can one day get what people want without it having to be a cash-only business. I'm concerned about the traffic, and I appreciate you looking at that. And the last thing I'll say is, I did speak to David Schiff, and we've got him lined up to speak on October 16th. I really feel it's important for the community to become more educated as well as our kids. This is a book for middle school readers, high, and I mentioned it before, but I just wanted to confirm that we've got that going, and I want to help in whatever way, because it is a very big issue.
So where's, where is that?
We're, we're...
You don't have a location?
We're confirming the location. It's either Redwood High School or, we'll let you know.
Okay, great, thank you.
And, and then, yeah, and the reason why I think this is so important is because the treatment centers will tell us and do tell us that marijuana is one of the main reasons people are being admitted for substance use treatment, and it used to be alcohol and other things back in the day, but that's what they're seeing today.
Okay.
So anyway, so I'm sorry, but I'm just saying, that's part of the reason why I'm motivated to try and help with education. Thank you.
Excuse me, you have already spoken. Do not speak from the back of the room. Bridgette, you can finish up.
Okay, and thank you also for mentioning, like, not smoking outside. It's, people are smoking in the park, people are smoking out here. I'm a mountain biker, I loved mountain biking, it's part of the culture, and it's just, you know, thank you for saying what you are, and you're brave in what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jasmine Garrity. You've seen me throughout the past year at these meetings, so thank you so much for, like, I just want to reiterate what Lou said. You guys have put the most work of any other city in Marin County on this issue. And then also kind of just a thanks to everybody who's here, who is here because we care about it, and we're actually being advocates and talking about things that matter to us. So it's important that we're all here tonight just to talk about that as well. I'm here on behalf of the Marin Prevention Network. I work in a lot of the schools here in Ross Valley, and I do a lot of tobacco education as well as some education on cannabis. So I just wanted to let you know that I do appreciate all the work that you do. You have put a lot of time into this. I appreciate no adult storefronts. I know that medical marijuana is important. We have medical marijuana. Adults do have access to, to recreational cannabis. I would like to see the buffer zones maintained. I think that's important for young people. And I think on behalf of just the schools, I was, I was at a fifth-grade class here in Ross Valley just yesterday, and I had a, I had to do two, or I had to do a referral of a fifth-grade student because she felt uncomfortable at home, because her parents were smoking things, she didn't know what it was. I said, "Oh, is it cigarettes?" You know, just talking to her and, and talking to her about alcohol use, and she felt uncomfortable and didn't have anybody to go to. So part of the reason why we do the education that we're doing, and we're going to continue doing that here in Ross Valley, is because there are those students and those fifth-graders that need help. So we can pick them up and we can help get them back in the community. But when we think about our environment and all the things in our environment, we all make up how these young students and these fifth-graders grow up to be. So all of us here, it's our collaborative effort to make it the best environment that we can, and so thank you so much for doing that.
Thank you. Richard?
I don't usually speak on this issue, as you know, and I haven't been to all 17 public hearings, but I've been through hours and hours of this discussion, and I've been listening very carefully. And I was triggered tonight by the woman from the tutoring center who said, "We need to protect the children." And what are we protecting them from? This is, feels like there's a demonization and a fear-bongering that's going on, and it's absurd. And the woman spoke about the alcohol and the liquor store and the cigarettes as a spot-on, and I believe in fairness and consistency, and, you know, it's just, it just doesn't make sense. And there are legitimate concerns about youth and, and the habits that they form and, and all of that, but, you know, I've been watching the Little League come in here and, "Oh my God, save the children, and oh my God, you know, they're all gonna, you know, we're gonna all have a bunch of corrupted kids." And none of them talk about the barbecues and the sports culture that are loaded with beer and alcohol and all of that. So let's have some consistency, let's be reasonable. You don't need a buffer at that particular location, and I feel like it's, it's just, it's, it's caving into the save the children, protect the children, and it's, it's really absurd.
Thank you. So I would just say this, obviously, this is an emotional issue, and people care very deeply. Let's try to not disparage other speakers. It takes a lot of courage to stand up here, and we don't all agree, and that's okay, but we appreciate everybody coming out. So next speaker?
Hi, I'm here to support the dispensary at 1620 Sir Francis Drake, and I'm against the buffer zone. My name is Natasha. I grew up here and have a home in the San Geronimo Valley. I have two daughters who graduated from Drake High School. I went to Drake High, and I'm aware of pot and its role in the community and that of West Marin. I can guarantee you that a teenager that wants to smoke some pot, they will not be needing to go to a dispensary that is probably the last place that they will go to access, and just as sure as they're not, the youth is not getting drunk or buying alcohol in the three bars that we have in this little town. The hypocrisy is amazing to me. Nonetheless, I'm hearing a lot of fear and concern with the effects of a dispensary that may have on our youth in this community. I feel very strongly that parents first and foremost need to educate and be honest with themselves and with their teens about the use of marijuana, and start realizing that the real concern in safeguarding should be against the effects of alcohol and these pharmaceutical pills that they keep in their bedside tables. These are bullets that my teenage daughters had to dodge. I hope that parents put energy into the mental resilience of the youth through building honest and trusting relationships and having dialogue and creating strong community ties. Now, this is legal, we voted it into law, and adults should have the right to have local dependable safe access. There are over 6,000 cardholders in this county. They should be able to have a relationship with the people that can resource and give helpful advice of the products that they know will help them. This discreet location with a professional business model being presented to the town offers no threat whatsoever to the youth of this community. It is our responsibility as community members to collaborate respectfully, to address concerns while maintaining patients' rights and access. I thank you for your consideration tonight.
Thank you.
Erin Corbier from San Anselmo, and I appreciate all the time and effort you've put into this topic, and clearly, a lot of people have a lot of passionate ideas on both sides, which I can appreciate, people's desire to provide a service as well as have commerce, having a nonprofit organization to service the community. I do appreciate the buffer zones, and as a parent of a high schooler who is dodging a lot of bullets with alcohol and other substances, thankfully has, you know, surrounded herself with other teens who choose not to participate, but it is from really a lot of different directions, and yes, definitely the black market, but it is always a concern, and she couldn't be here to speak because of finals, but she definitely feels passionate about protecting herself as well as all the other fellow high schoolers. And I think one of the things, I know other people have spoken about traffic concerns, so I guess there's a lot of delivery people who currently come here, which definitely poses a safety risk or safety issue for traffic. But at the same time, I guess I would just, apparently, this would be the only area that would have a dispensary in Marin County, so I just wonder about the impact of drawing traffic here, you know, to come to an actual physical location. So I don't know what that actual outcome would be, but if it's the only dispensary in Marin and it's this far off the freeway...
Thank you.
That would just be something I'd wonder about.
We already have the only dispensary in Marin County that we've had since 1997.
But it would be legal to the public, right?
It's a medical dispensary that's been here since, what was it, 96?
But it would be non-medical, right? So it would just be public.
I think they're proposing medical, but thank you very much.
Okay.
Mallory Guidheim, Willow Avenue. I wasn't going to speak, but I do want to reiterate what Richard and the woman after him said. I can understand both sides. My concern would be traffic, but I don't think it's going to be more traffic than the good earth has really brought in already. In terms of the buffer zone and the marijuana... In terms of the buffer zone and the marijuana availability, this has nothing to do with that, with kids, with teenagers. I don't, I don't advocate young, young adults and young teenagers because of what it does to their brain. I don't think that's a good idea, but this is not going to make it worse, and it's not going to stop them. They're going to get marijuana wherever they still get it. If you want to take out the bars and put buffer zones around them, as well as places where they sell cigarettes, that's one thing. But if you're not doing that, I really don't see a reason to do this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is Larry again. I just want to-
Excuse me, you already spoke.
I wanted to correct the incorrect information-
No.
About cash-only business.
You've already spoken. I'm sorry, I can't allow another presentation.
It's not a cash-only business.
Thank you, thank you.
I use my credit card in six dispensaries.
Thank you.
Hi, Kelsey Fernandez. Thank you all for the past 18 months, or so, of looking at this, and I know that there's really nothing I can say that you don't already know at this point, after listening to us, all of us from both sides, talk about it. I personally learned something new. Last Friday, I watched several hours of the testimony that, for the FDA, for the CBD products, and it was so incredibly powerful. Heard from families whose young children were actually probably alive today because of CBD products, that had seizure disorders, and that desperately needed this medication, and then heard from families whose children are no longer here because of THC. And I believe that these two facts, these two realities are coexisting right now, and that's why this is such a polarizing issue. And they're both true, they're both happening. This is new territory. We can't compare it to tobacco. We can't really compare it to alcohol, because it is a medicine. And I so appreciate that you, appreciate that you are allowing the patients that need this medicine to continue getting it, while also being cautious, since we don't, there's so much we don't know about THC, but what we do know from the World Health Organization and from the Academy of Sciences and all these, again, I know I've already sent this to you, is that there are some serious risks and harms that we have to be careful about. I just want to, in my 31 seconds, just address the alcohol thing, because I absolutely agree with what people are saying. And Marin County has the highest consumption rates of alcohol for youth and adults in the state, and evidence shows that youth who see liquor stores or alcohol advertising are influenced to drink at an earlier age. So 10, over 10,000 people a year in California die from alcohol-related problems. And so saying, "Well, if alcohol gets to do it, then why can't the cannabis industry?" We want to do something different. We want to do something better. My time's up. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Kelsey. Next speaker.
Are we on?
Yeah, you're on.
Hi, I'm Chelsea. I just, Fairfax Cares co-founder. I just want to make a statement to all of you guys that the problem out there is really for our teens. I just want to make this point. I know we're talking about rezoning. The problem with teens is Xanax these days and alcohol, and they are killing our kids. And we really need to focus on what the real problems are, because they're huge, and the kids are dying from these prescription pharmaceuticals that they get their hands on. Another thing I want to point out is I'm kind of, I don't know how to address the fact that people get up to the podium and they speak a lot without backing it up with actual facts. I submitted, I submitted some documents, a study that was done on debunking the myths of dispensaries, and I hope you guys all get a chance to look at that. I am definitely against the buffer zone. We're residents, we're parents, we want to take care of our children, just as much as everybody else does, and the planet. I raised my son here. I grew up here. I suffered from drug and alcohol abuse, probably more than most people you'll ever meet. I know a lot about the subject. I'm here to protect my community and our, and our kids, and I just want you guys to really know where I'm coming from with this. If we don't do this, big business is going to come in. I went to get signatures at the Cannabis Festival, and there's a lot of bad business going on, and we don't know who owns these corporations. We don't know if it's Monsanto. We don't know if it's Bayer. We don't know who's making these cannabis products, that they're just, kids work these booths. I ask them, "Where's your flower grown?", and "Who owns your company?", they don't know how to answer. These are the questions I'm going to go out and make sure that are answered, so that these, these dangerous contaminated products aren't getting in. CBD is great medicine. It needs THC to work. The unregulated CBD is dangerous because it's not regulated for contaminants. Nobody knows how long it lasts, nobody knows what else they're putting in the bottle, and it goes out and people take it. And I feel that it's giving the real stuff a bad rap, because I've tried it and had a really bad experience.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have another speaker? Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Lauren. I live in Fairfax, grew up here. Yeah, I mean, I've grown up here in a town that's, like, littered with alcohol activity and bars and places to drink. And all growing up, I knew I was never going to be able to go in those bars. I'm not of age. My ID wouldn't work there. Yeah, I mean, in a town that has, like, Bugaboo and a teenager hangout right next door to Naves, I just don't, I just think these buffer zones are completely laughable. Any business, a marijuana business, they're going to have people asking for IDs, just like a bar, or just like a liquor store. So it's just no difference to me whether it's a pot store or a liquor store. I don't get it, what the difference is. Why do liquor stores, why don't they have buffer zones? I mean, literally, my whole life, I've seen Bugaboo next to Naves and laughed at it, but what's the difference? I don't get it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mark Bell, Dominga Avenue. As I mentioned before, we seem to have a lot of taxes. You know, we have a report every month from the lady who's doing really good stuff for, you know, for older people and all these programs, and yet, an opportunity to fiscally help people on fixed income, trashed. I can't believe that Nevada is probably going to have a recreational dispensary before Fairfax. Nevada. That's, boggles my mind. I don't know if you've ever been to a dispensary. Hopefully, you have.
I have.
Okay. So you know, you need ID. They check it all out. You have to sign an agreement. You're not going to be smoking pot when you walk out the door. You're not going to be smoking pot in the area. You agree to that when you, when you sign on to a place. There's an incredibly long list of regulations that you have to agree to. So when you're talking about marijuana smoke on the streets, it's not from dispensaries, it's from people who are already getting it. And why you, you know, choose to not have a microbusiness, not have a laboratory, not have testing, not have vetted product available, when people have voted for it in an overwhelming majority, boggles my mind. That's it.
Thank you. Did we have another speaker on this topic?
Sorry, I know it's late. Try to wrap this up. My name is Pete Taylor. I'm a resident of San Anselmo. I own 65 Taylor. And I just want to recap here. I've heard a lot of debate. Kathy's application was rejected based on there will be no new medical cannabis will be granted to any business. That's per the Fairfax Legal Council.
So we're not here to discuss that, and I just want to make it clear to people, we are not weighing in on the pros or cons of that application. We are talking about cannabis overall in Fairfax. So if people are under the impression we're making a decision on that proposed business, we are not, and we're not here to speak to the letter that you received.
Okay, but just, just to be clear, the state is saying that there will be no cannabis, medical marijuana issue, ever. It's closed.
I think what the letter says is there's no cooperatives under the state law, that it's been repealed.
The Prop 215 law is over, and now it's under the Prop 64 law. It's, we're actually considering here tonight the permitting of medical cannabis retail in town, but that's under the Prop 64. It's just, it's complicated. We don't need to get into it tonight.
I understand, but they've repealed, they've, the state has repealed, basically, what says-
The old Prop 215 laws, which are many years old, they have, those are off the books now, and they're replaced with the Prop 64 law. It just needs to be-
Again, I want to just say, we're not, we're not going to be responding to the specifics of the letter you received, so if you want to give an overall on cannabis and what we're doing, we would appreciate that.
Well, I just, I just want to be clear that the, the medical marijuana is no longer legitimate. It's been, the ordinance has been-
The cooperatives are no longer legitimate, because they've been repealed under state law. And so I think if you have further questions on that, you should ask to meet with town staff.
Oh, cool, okay, but everyone here is under the impression that medical marijuana is what the town of Fairfax is going to authorize, and it, per state, it's not going to-
That is correct.
Okay, so let's, okay, let's go back. We're not going to get into back and forth. If you want to question more detail on that letter, I would invite you to talk to town staff.
And to clarify too, if I may, Mayor, that, the aspect that Prop 2, of Prop 215 that's been overturned by Prop 64 is the operation of collectives, not medical marijuana in general. That's changed. This particular issue, as I understand it, is related only to collectives. So that's the distinction, if I understand the letter, that I, and I just read it for the first time today.
Well, it didn't, it didn't use the word collective, but we could debate this-
It does. It talks about collectives in there, so.
So, did you have specifics on the overall?
Yeah, well, one final comment is, is a survey was done in over 1,500 Fairfax residents, 40% of which responds, responses said that they would not come to Fairfax for cannabis.
Okay, thank you.
Just-
Would anybody else like to speak on this topic? All right, so I'm going to bring it back, but I apologize, but we need to take an eight-minute break. We've been sitting here a long time, and we will reconvene in eight minutes, which will be a little after 9:30. Thank you. And get started in just a minute, when we have Councilmember Reed back here. I think he's on his way. He's coming. So I want to mention that I'm closing the public hearing, and we're bringing it back to the council members to deliberate. Also, to make one other announcement, the next item on the budget, on, on the council meeting agenda is our budget, which some of us are very interested in. I know there are people that it might be interested in the audience, but we do have a number of folks here for the item. Number 16, thank you, John, and that is a residence petition, so we will take that up beforehand. Do I need a motion for that? Okay, could someone make a motion to move item 16 ahead of item 15?
I'll move item 16 ahead of 15.
Second?
I'll second at the request of the mayor and the folks that are here to speak on that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
But I also want to mention that we're going to be deliberating on cannabis, and that may take some time, so secure your seats, and-
Yeah, if the Warriors are in overtime, maybe you could watch that. Oh, is it?
They lost?
They lost.
Oh, okay, well, thank you. All right, so-
David Weinsdorf is here and not watching the Warriors game.
So, just, so I want to just mention to my colleagues on the council that, you know, our meetings do go late, but to the extent that we can kind of get our thoughts out on the deliberations as briefly as possible, I know that's difficult. This is a, this is a very difficult item, and as Ben said, this is our 17th meeting on this. So let's try to be as brief as possible, and to the extent feasible, just get our thoughts out, and maybe we do a second round, but, and I know Bruce was anxious to provide some clarification. So, Councilmember Ackerman.
Thank you, and thank you, everyone, for your comments on this and at our 17th meeting here, and for your appreciation. Many of you were explicit about appreciating how difficult this is. I mean, we could all talk about our own personal history. I personally will just say I lived in Cambridge, Massachusetts in the early 70s, where we had a $5 fine for the use of marijuana. So it's, it's gone a long way back, this idea of trying to normalize this herb, but at the same time, trying to avoid some of the problems that alcohol has produced, and that now prescription drugs are producing. So we're, we're dealing with it. We're doing the best we can. And I'll also say that what we do tonight may not be the same thing as what's going on 10 years from now. I've said before that the context for myself, in which we have to think about this, is a context in which if we were to open a recreational storefront in Fairfax, we would be the only one in the county. Nevada may do one, but that, that would be a huge impact on this town, and which many people have said that we just aren't ready for. That doesn't mean that it'll always be the same situation that it is now. Anyway, to get to the point, three things. Overall, I support the ordinance that's before us. We, we've, this is what we came up with last month. One of the things that I wanted to clarify is that, as was mentioned before, when we talk about delivery, we talk about we're doing, we're permitting three things. One would be a medical storefront, and one would be recreational delivery, but medical, delivery of medical marijuana would also be, I think that's our intention, is the delivery of either medical or recreational is what we would be permitting. So just to make sure that we're clear, and that the ordinance is clear on that. And just another clarification, and then I'll get to a specific proposal. The other clarification is that we, when we talk about buffer zones around schools or other uses, youth centers, or possible tutoring centers, that where, if an applicant comes in, they, places that the applicant would be able to apply for would be relative to those uses as they existed at the time of the application. If later, another school, or youth center, or tutoring center, or whatever daycare center were to open, then a buffer zone would be drawn around that. That would affect any future applicant for another business, but it wouldn't affect the businesses that already existed, because they already are there. So just to clarify that that, we wouldn't throw a business out of town because somebody else opened, yeah. So that was something that was mentioned, I think, earlier tonight, and I just wanted to clarify that that, that's how that would work. The specific proposal that I wanted to make is that, and this is consistent with many of the comments tonight, and I would like to offer this as kind of a, of an approach that might work, that the buffer around the, around a tutoring center, which right now there's one tutoring center called the Tutoring Center- there's one tutoring center called the Tutoring Center, but the buffer around a tutoring center, if, currently, the way this, the ordinance before us is written, it's 250 feet around the tutoring center. I'd like to propose that if that tutoring center is close to Sir Francis Drake, so that Sir Francis Drake cuts through that 250-foot radius, that the buffer be restricted to only the side of Sir Francis Drake where the tutoring center is, not the other side of Sir Francis Drake. So in the case of the current Tutoring Center, the Tutoring Center it's called, the buffer would be on the south side of Sir Francis Drake with a 250-foot radius around it, but not the north side of Sir Francis Drake. So that's a proposal I'd like to put forth, as it means, one of the rationales for that, of course, is people have talked about a specific location, which seems like a reasonable, possible location for either the applicant who's interested in it or possibly another applicant, but that's one reason, but in general, the reason is that there just are not that many places in this town, as you see from these maps. Once you draw the buffer zones out, it rules out a lot, and so I'd like to offer that specific suggestion as a way of ruling out a little bit less of the town and allowing us to have the best possible locations, the least disruptive possible locations, and that's it.
Thank you, Bruce. Would somebody else like to speak on this matter? John?
Okay, I'll go down the line then. And thanks, Bruce, for clarifying some of those things. There's another, I mean, just as your early housekeeping things are there, just looking at some of the ways that it was interpreted and reading through the material that staff has presented for this week, this month's meeting, the way it's written, it says, you know, that we're allowing two, two different marijuana businesses in town, one of them being the existing one at, that's at School Street Plaza, the Marin Medical Arms, and the way that it's written, it's not clear that if for some reason that were to close, that it wouldn't necessarily open up another license, and I, you know, want to clarify that there would continue to be two allowed, you know, so that at that point, we're not just having one, one business have a monopoly. And so I think that that was certainly the intention, as we talked about it last month, and I just wanted to be clear because I couldn't tell from reading this staff report that that, it was necessarily-
I agree with that, I raised that same issue.
Yeah, okay. Let me see, and then, I guess, I mentioned during the earlier time that a lot of these 600-foot buffer zones from schools and stuff, that's, that's state law, which is something that we have to unfortunately live with, you know, we don't get to talk about-
Just to clarify, we could change the buffer zones in state law if we wanted to.
Yes.
We're not stuck with those, so I know you've stated that, but we can be more restrictive or less restrictive.
Right, and that, the state law is a little bit unclear. It says, oh, it's 600 feet, but you can change it if you want, and that law is, it's, it hasn't been, nobody's tried to change it one way or the other, and I think probably something like that would end up in a court somewhere and get further clarified. I don't necessarily want to do that on Fairfax's nickel, myself.
That wasn't my understanding. I think the analysis that Janet provided early, early on was that we had, we have discretion there.
We have discretion.
It's part of our local authority.
Okay, well, if that's the case, then I see a lot of blue on that map, which is, you know, kind of brings me to the next thing, is that with the various buffer zones, it really, you know, the one area on that map up there, the significant part of it is Ferrin-Salem Plaza, which has one owner for that whole zone, and that one owner has, you know, rents to the Good Earth, it rents to the Post Office, it rents to the Brew Pub and all those other businesses that are there, and that one owner says that they're not interested in having a marijuana business of any type on their premises. So that pretty much creates another blue zone right there in the middle, and, you know, with the buffer zones that, basically, we're kind of thinking out loud last time around in adding this new one, it really leaves three properties up there, unless you count another one that has a little bit of blue over the edge, and I don't know about the legality of that way up on the top of the map. Those three properties include Beach House Style, which is basically a business run out of an old garage of a house, the backside of a house, and then two other houses next door that don't even have the garage, okay? So that's pretty much what we're looking at in terms of availability of things, and I think, at this point, I would agree with what the Planning Commission was looking at in terms of the suitability for different locations in Fairfax, and look at the north side of Drake on the east end of town as probably one of the better places for a business like this. So I think that we need to relook at, at that buffer zone around the learning, the tutoring session. And, and we have a proposal here, that Bruce just came up for, I was ready to, I was the one, I mean, I don't know if I was the first one last, last month to come up with like, well, if you have a tutoring sys, you know, thing, what is that? And I was basically thinking about what happens next door and, you know, what kind of environment is going to be happening around something with kids, and it was interesting to see a cut here from a couple of the kids who go to that tutoring center in this, I mean, obviously, this is two, you know, out of the 20 a day or whatever, but I tend to think that we need to talk with kids and, I mean, I've, I've been, you know, I've got a kid myself, I know a lot of kids and help them deal with substances themselves in the community and try to get their head around how to, you know, grow up and, and have a healthy lifestyle. And I think it's something that we need to do as a community with conversation, so that, I've always taken that position and I continue to have that. So I was ready to change back on that. I mean, Bruce's approach is a little bit different, and I could maybe live with that too, I mean, because that basically talks about next door. It reaches a little far, I was not in favor of 250 feet when I was talking about that last time, but that's first time around, that's as far as I got right now.
I'm certainly open to other radiuses, but-
Okay.
I'm certainly open to other radiuses, but I just wanted to state that Sir Francis Drake is a pretty big barrier, and that's, that's the main point.
It is, and it's probably, I measured the walking distance between those two businesses, and it's over 300 feet. As the crow flies right across the street, yeah, it's pretty close, but, but you can't get across that street in under five minutes because it's Sir Francis Drake.
It's tough. Okay, thank you very much, John and Bruce, and who would like to go next? Peter or Renee?
I would first, I'm sorry.
Well, you're, you're to be third. Okay, Renee.
First of all, thank you all, like, so, so very much for all the hard work, and I do want to comment very briefly that it was unfortunate to me to receive this today. And I, and there were a lot of emails, and I tried to go through some of them, and I know that people took pains to actually write to us, so I didn't have time to read all of them. There were 148 emails in here, just by the way. Well, but, which is good, but it also poses a little bit of a problem for us in knowing who you all, but, but as Barbara said, as the mayor said, that this is, we're not considering an application, we're talking about this in general, but I do need to comment briefly that I received your survey, and I was eager because I've been very interested and curious in survey, in, in understanding all of these questions around why people voted yes or no, and, you know, what were, really, why, and I thought we'd get to it, and so I took the survey, and the question said, did you vote yes or no on Prop 64, and I marked the appropriate box, and then the next question was, why did you vote yes on Prop 64? And then I had to stop, so I just want to say for, for accuracy's sake, that, that I'm not sure how many of these were people who were able to complete the survey or not complete it. I tried it three times. No, I couldn't skip it, actually, but, unless I didn't see it. But I just needed to comment because I really want to make sure, you know, that these things are done, and just as we don't like statistics to rule the day when we're not quoting the sources, then we have to really be careful with surveys as such. We've heard so much, and, and there's something that was sent to me in an email that I think we all got, that said that making this policy and regulating marijuana in our small towns is not a, is not an event, it's a process. This has been a long process, but I don't feel as though taking this long road is, is all a bad thing. I don't feel we're dragging our feet, I don't think we're delaying, I think we're really desperately trying to figure this out. And we're also charged with representing the entire community, so we can have feelings about it, but it's disingenuous to say that we are able to let our own feelings be our, you know, drive us through this process. So I've been listening to everyone. Yes, we have bars, we have too many bars, we have liquor stores, we have cigarettes run amok in our pharmacies, we have kids getting access to everything, but to me, that doesn't mean that just because we screwed up there and we didn't create zoning that was protective enough around those substances that we should just go for it and make it equal for marijuana. I think we have to relook at how we do this, and I think, given the fact that the state, as Lou Tremaine said, I thought very eloquently, it, the state has, what'd you say, screwed us? Or has its head somewhere where it shouldn't be? And in, I wanted to just read something that is in our ordinance here around product, and I really appreciated that, I don't believe we should dive into how we regulate product and THC levels and packaging, because this is what we were given. In the state BPC 26130, parentheses C, parentheses 1, provides that edible cannabis products shall be not designed to be appealing to children or easily confused with commercially sold candy or foods that do not contain cannabis. So I've been to a lot of dispensaries, I really have done my homework. I cannot believe the amount of really cool-looking gummies and animal-shaped things and bubbles and cool packaging and soda pops, and so that, that is something that the state is saying, yep, we got these rules, we got your back, we're going to deal with it on a case-by-case basis, they can't even deal with it on a town-by-town, or even I want to say, at this point, with where they're at, even at a county-by-county basis, because they don't have their act together yet to understand exactly what's out there. This determines on a case-by-case basis, it's not attractive to children, any product that is easily confused with commercially available foods that do not contain cannabis. This product is fast and furious, and we don't know enough about it, and I do appreciate, with all due respect, that one member of the public said that they'd never seen anyone who died from THC, and I'm not going to throw around statistics that I don't have the actual source for, but we are seeing a lot of people going to the hospital. We know from data that shows that DUI marijuana-related accidents have, are on the, on the uprise, and I can use numbers, we're seeing it. It makes sense, there's a lot more product out there. The black market is not just because the stuff's out on the street and it's not regulated, it's because there's so much stuff out there. And so having a couple of stores in town, with all due respect, I don't think it's going to affect how much is out there on the black market. I think that it would be awesome to get it off the black market and somewhere safe, but I do not believe that, right now, that's an argument that I could, in all good faiths, stand on and say, this is going to be it, these Drake kids are not going to have stuff on the, you know, from the black market. We're making so much stuff here that it's being exported to different states. So, I, I like the ordinance, I don't think it's perfect. Buffers, I really believe that I have heard from enough people and done enough of my own homework to believe that these buffers are important. I think that TLC sees, I think Bonnie said 25 kids today, but I know, having a kid that, that has gone there, I know based on how much work they've done at the schools, the middle schools, after-school, and the kids that come through there, they see kids during the day, kids that have not been able to be in a regular school system, they see a lot of kids. I thank the young folks for speaking tonight, but I also know that there's a bus stop right over there, on the other side, on the north side of Drake, and that's where all those kids come and go from. There are kids around, it's, you know, we can't say that, that there aren't, and we know that, I'm not going to talk about access or normalization or any of that stuff, but there is a culture of marijuana that is pervasive here, whether we think that's good or bad, that's not the point, but it's around, and there are kids around, and so I feel that those buffers need to remain intact. I, I would very much like to have a business such as the one that came, has been talked about tonight. I, I really, I really would. I think that what you all are doing is, is important, like deeply important, and I really respect you guys and what you brought. And I am tasked with an incredibly difficult decision here, but I, I believe that I need to stand with what it is that's written in here. I think the 250 is, you know, I kind of wish you guys were on just a little further outside the 250, like 252 or something, but I'm, I'm feeling very strongly that this buffer should remain intact and, and I'm, yeah, stick with that.
Thank you. Peter?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, everyone, for your very thoughtful comments. In a way, it's, it's not a simple issue, there definitely is a hazard associated with marijuana, especially what I would consider needlessly potent marijuana, which is sort of the norm now. I mean, that, if I could have a magic wand, I'd wave back the concentration, some more, you know, levels that I grew up with as a kid, because it is a lot more toxic, it's a lot more risky for young people, especially for developing brains, psychotic events, things like that. So that is a real hazard, and I do appreciate that. We can't really address that, though, unfortunately, that's sort of something that has to be done, I don't know, at a state level or FDA level, we did kind of look into that, but, you know, what we can do is just, in a limited way, decide where businesses that could sell these products can operate and how they can operate, and what types of businesses can operate. Someone made a comment about, you know, Nevada is going to probably have, you know, more marijuana-type businesses in Fairfax. That's true, it's much easier to do this in a larger city like Nevada that has a lot of land. I see it as a land use issue. You know, Nevada has enough land and areas where they can have these different uses where they don't abut against things like schools and so forth. In Fairfax, you can see from that map, we're much more condensed, it's much more granular. And so I see, this is, like, to use an example, you know, would we want to have a Costco in Fairfax? I see it as that kind of a, a land use decision. I shop at Costco, I think Costco is great, but is it appropriate for, say, Fairfax? The, that being said, the impact of a dispensary wouldn't be like a, would not be anything like a Costco, but I was just trying to come up with a metaphor for, you know, it's neither being pro-pot nor anti-pot, it's what's an appropriate land use decision. So given the sort of granularity of Fairfax too, my thinking on buffer zones is, I don't think we should have buffer zones for delivery-only businesses, I think they're very nondescript. I, I do disagree with the concept- I do disagree with the concept that having, merely having a marijuana business in town is going to induce or encourage young people to use marijuana. I respectfully just really disagree with that. A number of people made the ironic observation about all the bars in town and liquor stores. And I think a marijuana dispensary or delivery business, especially a delivery business, would be, would not present that kind of attractive nuisance. So I would say no buffer zones for delivery only. I would advocate, listening to everyone, actually eliminating the buffer zone for the Tutor Center. I think it's a little too, kind of an arbitrary or custom-made rule. And again, I don't think having a specific buffer zone just for that business really serves our purposes because it does eliminate so much of the town for potential sites. And my thinking has kind of gone back and forth on that. In exchange for eliminating that buffer zone and in exchange for eliminating buffer zones for deliveries, I would want to advocate that we have really restrictive rules on signage so that such a business doesn't promote marijuana in any way. And I would even, you know, drill down and say, you know, no marijuana insignias or, you know, indicia of, you know, pipes or whatever, just, you know, real plain, simple signage. I think that would eliminate the kind of fear that young people will walk by that and they'll go, oh, that looks fun. So make that super bland and restrictive. For a storefront, a retail business, I think, too, it makes sense to have buffer zones around schools. I would entertain possibly shrinking that a little bit. And I've evolved in my thinking on that, too. If we had really restrictive signage and so forth, I'd feel, I think that's a reasonable compromise on that. The other, and that seems to be the points of contention in our ordinance. The rest of it, I think, has evolved well. I think we have really good rules on cultivation and so forth. And I'm really, I'm very torn about allowing storefront recreational stores. Again, I kind of see it as a, you know, land use issue. Is it, is it good for Fairfax or not? And I kind of looked at where most of the sort of citizen input has been, which is to say, we're okay with delivery, we're okay with keeping the current medical dispensary grandfathered in. It's not an urgent issue to have a cannabis dispensary in town, a storefront dispensary. So I kind of was going with what I perceived to be what most people would agree with as a use in town. So, again, buffer zones, I would eliminate for delivery. Would consider shrinking them for retail even. And I actually...
What was the? What did you say?
Well, I think the, we currently have a 600-foot setback or buffer for a business within a school, daycare center, or youth center. And I would actually be open to reducing that a little bit. That's a little bit changing in my thinking. And, you know, I'm really torn about allowing adult-use recreational retail. I'm actually kind of leaning back towards allowing that if other people supported that. And it's different than my position last month. But, and before that, I kind of had the position that allowing two businesses, either retail, recreational, or medical, or delivery, but a total of two businesses in town would be appropriate. And I'm kind of rethinking that that's what I would support if other people would also support that. I'm also okay with the ordinance as it's evolved to the state it is tonight with my recommendations to reduce the buffer zones and eliminate the buffer zone around the tutoring So that's my thinking. It's an interesting exercise to make something that works for Fairfax with a lot of competing concerns. And so anyways, that's where I'm at.
Thank you. So thank everyone for your thoughtful comments. And I also want to thank everybody who came and spoke tonight. I know it takes courage, and I know we have people on opposite sides. But I have a few things, some of which some of you have heard me say. I have been an advocate for allowing a retail adult-use storefront. And prior to this meeting, I was the only one that supported that. Councilmember Lacks is now supporting that. A couple of things. I have not been supportive of including the tutoring center. And that's not because I don't think that the tutoring center has, I think they've done good things for our town. They've been here 25 years. I've looked at their website. I see all the help that they offer students. They're not somebody who came in and, you know, just fly by night. They've been here for a long time and they're established. But I also believe that becoming a school is a different sort of situation. It requires accreditation. Even the Montessori schools have some sort of process to go through, which is different than creating a tutoring center. A tutoring center, you can get a business license. And I have never been supportive of adding the tutoring center, but I'm not supportive of adding, making it all tutoring centers. That is something that I could do tomorrow. I have a master's degree. I'm a scientist. I could be helping kids with science, probably. It wouldn't be so, it's been a while. But anyway, I have a lot of concerns about the tutoring center. And what I heard here tonight is the evolution of thinking on that from Councilmember Reed and also Councilmember Lacks. I also heard a proposal for a different buffer. I am not supportive of including them in the buffer zone. I think one of the things we've done by these buffer zones, and John Reed has pointed this out, basically, we've done an effective ban by doing this. Fairon Sound, it's actually a collective of owners, even though we see rich. And they have never been interested in having any sort of cannabis business, even way back when it was just our medical marijuana dispensary ordinance. So that's, they're owners. They have the right to do that. I really don't think there's anywhere else that could be done. So are we saying, as a council, Fairfax, who's been very progressive and 77.6% of voters supported Prop 64, that we want nothing? There may be some on this council that do want nothing. And I appreciate their unwavering kind of support of that concept. But a couple of things I also want to bring up is that I also agree with the idea of eliminating the buffer for delivery. There's no walk-in business for delivery. And I also agree, and I thought this came up at the previous meeting, I think Councilmember Lacks brought this up again, we should have restrictive signage. This has come up at every meeting. So I think there was something in the presentation about, you know, six foot or something like that, which is consistent with our sign ordinance. I think we want to have the kind of signage that's very discreet and, you know, similar to what we have with the current dispensary, which has pretty much nothing on the front that would let you know what it is. But discreet signage. So a couple of more detailed-type comments is, for both ordinances, I would eliminate the definition of tutoring centers. I would also eliminate them from the buffers. John Reed mentioned the idea that the way both ordinances are written right now, if the current medical marijuana dispensary potentially went out of business, potentially they could sell their conditional use permit, but they might be completely gone. And the way the, both ordinances are written, it basically just talks about one. So we need some language that would really say, in the event that the existing medical marijuana dispensary is no longer operational, two potential areas are open. A couple of more detailed things is, this is minor, but, you know, we have a lot of wheresses about why this isn't a great thing. But one of the things we don't point out in our wheresses is that we've had the first medical marijuana dispensary in the entire state of California. It's either 96 or 97, I'm not sure. And John feels 90, pardon?
The entire nation.
In the entire nation. But at least for California, we could say that, for sure. Who knows what's been out there? But thank you, Lou. So I'd like us to have a wheress on that. I think also Mimi Newton pointed out, there's a wheress that talks about that we're saving greenhouse gas emissions. I've raised this in some of my speeches. We're not saving greenhouse gas emissions by this ordinance. In fact, we're encouraging a lot more people coming in that are delivering. So that, again, that's a minor point, but let's not jump out there and say we're doing something that we're really not. I have some other details on the permit requirements as far as the amount of time that the permit is good for. I think 12 months is really too short. I wouldn't go much longer than that. I'd say 24 months. I think by the time they get operating, a year's almost gone. So at least make it 24 months. And then there's notes about when they have to submit their renewal. And I would change that to 90 days before the expiration from 60. And then based on the scoring criteria, I kind of think the business plan and the qualification should be rated equally. I think the scoring criteria looks great. I would just rate those equally. But those are my detailed comments. And I think my conclusion is that we have substantive changes to the ordinance. I think we heard a couple of things. Is that Bruce agrees with the ordinance overall. He proposed a change in the buffer for the, what sound like the tutoring center. What I heard from John and from Peter Lacks and from myself, that we don't support the buffers on the tutoring center. And so, and...
Sorry, for anything. You just want buffers going around tutoring centers.
Right.
Is that what John's?
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, when I first thought of this, I thought of next door to it.
Yeah.
And so Bruce's thing, that's new thinking to me.
That's a buffer.
If that was the general feeling of the council, I mean, I'll go along with either one. But I don't think we can zone this out and say Marin Alliance does, for some reason, go under. And, I mean, I'm not wishing that, but say if they did, there's not too, and we did adopt Bruce's thing, where are they going to be? There's no other places.
So, so let's do this. Let me just kind of sum it up. And we may not all agree on this, but, and then I heard Peter talking about, well, Peter supported the ordinances with the changes he gave, which talked about no buffer zones for delivery, allowing adult-use storefront, which only Peter and I agreed with, so the rest of the council did not. Eliminating the buffer zone for the tutoring center, the restrictive rules on signage, and potentially shrinking the buffer zone on schools. And while I think that's a concept we could explore, I think that would be better for the future. I mean, yes, we have done this in a very thoughtful manner, but at some point, to use a non-technical term, we have to fisher-cut bait on this stuff. And we have to make some decisions. So I think that's an interesting concept, but I kind of don't think the council as a whole is there. And rather than spending more, so you agree with that?
Yeah. It's, it's not a must-have thing. It's just, in my thinking, I've evolved, like, well, maybe we could reduce these. But I'm fine with maintaining the school buffer zones.
That might be in the future, some way to address the problem that I just brought up with your thought, Renee.
So I think Renee has been unwavering, and I...
If I may?
Yes.
Because this is really important. I just, for the record, would like to say that I don't believe that my position has been that I don't support anything at all. I think that we, at this time, have Marin Medical Alliance, and they are operating as a dispensary and an adult-use delivery operation.
Not yet.
Sorry. Yes, in the process. And I would not like the outcome to become that we have nothing and no access for someone to walk in. And as it looks today with what I'm saying, that would be, I don't think that we should pass ordinances in order to talk about amending them in the near future. But I do want everyone to remember that they are amendable. And if we ended up with nothing and it was far more appropriate for this community to have something, then that's something that I would be very willing to relook at in order to have a good business in town. I have to say that for the record. And I also would really like to say, very briefly, that I'm not sure I agree with the greenhouse gas inventory that has been shared with us tonight. Because I really do believe that being the only adult-use storefront dispensary in Marin County would bring far more trips than we would be dealing with in terms of delivery or people that would be going over to Berkeley daily to do this. Delivery, you can pack a whole bunch of stuff in one vehicle. I understand what Mimi shared with us. But I don't think that it's a slam dunk that we're going to be, you know, going off the sustainability charts. It's a wash. Okay, that's all I want to say.
So I think, first of all, Renee, I want to thank you for clarifying your position. I appreciate that. And I apologize for misstating your position. But I think you have been unwavering in support of children and raising a lot of concerns. So I appreciate that and your hard work on this issue, and everyone's hard work. So with that question, Ben, did you have a question?
Yes. Obviously, things are changing from what we proposed and have written. And so we want to make sure that we get an idea of what a majority consensus is on a couple of issues.
So not consensus, a majority?
Majority position. Yes, excuse me. And so the first question is regarding the tutoring center.
Three of us said no buffers for the tutoring center.
Yeah. And I would agree, eliminate it from the definitions in the ordinance.
Okay.
Yes. In terms of...
And I would be okay with the no buffer as well.
Okay, so that's four. All right.
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
For delivery businesses, should there be a buffer at all?
So I am supportive of no buffer. Peter Lacks is supportive of no buffer. I would poll each of the members to raise...
Talking about for delivery only from any, either school, youth center, daycare, any of them? You're saying, you guys are saying no buffer for delivery only? You're saying, you guys are saying no buffer for delivery only from any of those?
Right.
Yeah, delivery only.
Yeah, I disagree.
Okay, and John?
We don't need to hear the details.
No.
Yeah, I mean, I don't see the need for, you know, 600 feet from a school or something like that.
So are you agreeing with no buffer?
You don't want it right next door, but I don't think that it's a particularly high-profile at all.
So the question is, do you want a buffer or not?
As proposed, it's 200. Can I, can I put one, a slight refinement? Actually, what I was thinking was maintaining a 250 buffer from a school or youth center for delivery only, and then no other buffers for delivery only.
I would support that.
Yeah, it's kind of a compromise.
And Bruce, where are you? And you need to turn your mic on?
Yeah, I would, I think, I think what Peter said is what I would say.
So the 250...
250 feet from the school and from...
Youth center.
Right now, as it's proposed, it's just schools, right? We've got the school, the Montessori school. We already said no buffer around the tutoring center.
No, we're talking about the schools and youth centers.
Right, and this map right here.
Don't look at the map, look at the ordinance. So the question is, do you support a buffer for youth centers and school, which is in state law? Those are defined in state law.
But aren't we talking right now about delivery?
Delivery only.
We're talking about delivery only.
Are we saying, limiting to schools? Or limiting to schools and youth centers? Let's be clear.
Well, that's the question for the council to ask.
What did you pose the question? Could you just re-pose the question?
Yes, the question is, do you want a buffer for delivery only? And if so, what should the buffer be, and what should it be from? So do you want it 250 feet? And do you want it, A, do you want to have that, and B, do you want it 250 feet? And then C, do you want to limit it to, what I'm hearing right now, is schools and youth centers?
Okay, so Peter, you want to go ahead? I think Renee already said no.
Yeah, 250 feet from schools. And, yeah, and I would say 250 from youth centers, just for simplicity.
Okay, Renee?
So those two, and also from the tutoring centers.
Okay.
In all intents and purposes, we're dealing with where teens hang out.
Okay, but we're, we've already... Okay, and John?
Yes.
Okay, Bruce?
Yeah, 250 from schools and youth centers.
Okay, and I'm all for eliminating the buffers completely from delivery, but obviously that doesn't prevail. So you have your answer.
Okay, thank you.
And other questions?
Yes, you brought up two other items in terms of permit renewal requirements. You suggested 24 months would be more appropriate, and I'd like to get a...
Okay, so Peter, what would you like?
I agree, yeah, 24 months, that seems like the right...
The only reason we did one year, we match with the state. State does one-year renewals.
Okay.
That's why we said one year.
Can you just tell what section that is in the ordinance? Sorry, I want to see which...
It's near the end.
And how does it read exactly? Sorry, I didn't see it.
Uh, I'm not sure where it is in my notes.
It's section 5.5, 5.56.100, Terms of Permit and Renewal Procedures. Permits issued in this chapter shall be valid for 12 months.
I'm fine with that.
Okay, I'm fine with that. John?
Yeah, I think 90 days is realistic.
No, I think it's the 24 months for the permit.
Oh, 24 months, like making ours 24 months, you mean?
Yes. Okay.
Yeah, I mean, is there any point to matching state law with that?
Well, you'd have an oddity of, I guess they would go to the state, if they didn't get a state license, then they could have a local license, but it wouldn't be valid.
They'd like us better than the state, anyway, but...
But they need both to operate, so if...
They need both to operate.
So if the state license is revoked, they're per se not allowed to operate anymore, so...
Okay, so Bruce, did you want to weigh in on that?
I'm good with it.
Yeah, if it's, if that's not unreasonable as far as the administration...
Less burden on staff.
Okay, and what was your other questions? The 90 days before the renewal?
Correct.
Okay, so the idea is to give us more time, that somebody would take 90 days versus 60 days to submit their renewal?
Yeah, I think that's good. More notice, they have longer time, longer period, longer permit. They, I think it's fair to ask them to get in their renewal sooner.
Okay, Renee?
Yeah.
Okay, John?
Yes, on the 90 days.
Bruce, could you just say it into the mic?
Yes.
Okay, and Barbara, yes. Okay.
And then last question, in terms of, I'm hearing a discussion about reducing the allowable sign area and...
Restrictive signage? So we want you to come back with something that really, we're not going to give you a size tonight. We want a very small, discreet sort of signage. And I think we've talked about this in the context of other things, so maybe you could bring that back.
So if I could add to that and see if everyone agrees, conceptually, I want it to be as unsexy, you know, unattractive, you know, unlike, you know, beer displays in liquor stores with, you know, bucks and women, you know. We don't want any of that. We don't want any insignias of, you know, vape pens, or marijuana leaves, or, you know, buds. And we don't want displays of products visible, or allowing, you know, advertising of, you know, 50% off on Hindu Kush, original OT, you know, we don't want any of that. Just real simple restrictive name of the business.
Can I just, can I just, rather than getting into the details, does everybody agree with that concept of very discreet signage?
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
I'll leave it up to your experience and skills to come up with that.
And if you want to work with Councilmember Lacks, in the meantime, on that approach, that would be great. So do you have all your...
Make it look boring.
Do you have all your questions answered?
Yes, thank you very much.
Okay, and I would say this, we are past 10 o'clock, and I want to thank everyone for their patience. We do have to make a few decisions. And unfortunately, we really have to get through everything on this agenda, other than council reports and comments. And potentially, does the town manager have a report? No. So could we defer the council report and comments? The council member reports are listed on the consent calendar. So could we defer that? Because we do have to get through the other things.
Sure.
Okay, would somebody make a motion?
I'll move, continuing the council reports, and that's it.
And town managers' report?
Oh, and the town managers' report.
Okay.
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Did you get that? Moving on to item 16, which is the residence petition for the acquisition of a 10-acre parcel.
Oh, Madam Mayor, for the last item, is it the council direction, I believe, that you're continuing it to July 17th?
Yes, we'd like to continue this to the July 17th meeting. And I think we would like to do the first reading at the July 17th meeting, rather than rehashing this yet again.
Yeah, we'll come back with ordinance reflecting your revisions, and it'll be the first reading, introduction.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. So moving on to item 16, which is discuss, consider residence petition for the acquisition of 10-acre parcel for open space. Did you want to do the staff report, Garrett?
Sure, it's pretty brief. On May 6, we received a petition signed by 25 residents requesting the item be placed on the agenda per the town code. When that happens, we place it on the next agenda. And really, the issue is the acquisition of a 10-acre parcel off of Ridgeway Avenue for $500,000 from a developer-proposed Miranda Heights project. At your May 1 meeting, you had reported out a closed session that you weren't going to pursue that concept any further. You obviously reported out from this meeting, the closed session. Previously, just to restate, as the council indicated, that really because it's an application that's in the process, and while it's going to take a while till it actually comes to you, really, the council is in a position to opine on any issues regarding the application, regarding its merits and so on, regarding the Miranda Heights application. And so that's just important for the public to know, is when they're commenting and offer you different opinions on that property, you can't comment on it, because that's an application that's going to be coming to you at some point in the future. Why, it's going to take a while of time, but it's something that ultimately is going to come to you for consideration. So with that, unless there's any questions from the council, that's the staff report.
Are there any questions from the council?
No.
Okay, so I will open it up to public comment on this matter. So would people move forward to approach the podium? Appreciate that, thank you. And if you feel comfortable doing so, state your name and address.
Bill, if you could speak first, that would address the overall issue.
So welcome, Bill Long, Executive Director of Marin Open Space Trust.
And press the button.
From faraway Nevada, which I've heard a lot about tonight. I don't know what to think about it all. I think I need to be more involved up there.
The big city.
But, yeah. I am the Chair of Marin Open Space Trust. We were incorporated 10 years ago to work with the county and the cities to protect critical threatened open space. And since then, we've been involved in a number of projects, successful projects, from Nevada to Sausalito. A big one was Sky Ranch, which Fairfax, among others, participated in and strongly supported, and was totally successful, and is now secure for public use. Right from the beginning, we became involved in discussions here in Fairfax on the wall property. I think it was one of the first meetings and site visits that we had. And since then, three or four, or maybe more times, we've had further discussions, and it's an ongoing issue. Just recently, we learned of the opportunity that was being presented to Fairfax to sort of shortcut a development exercise and secure, on very favorable terms, potentially favorable terms, a 10-acre section of that property that's the most visible part from downtown, and could be a very key piece of public open space and public trails. So I'm here today to say that if the town decides to proceed with this acquisition, most is ready to work with you, work with the property owner, and work with the town to create a purchase and sale agreement, an option, and also to go into a fundraising We are reasonably optimistic about public funding for some of the purchase price. The private fundraising will strongly depend on how solid the support is for this purchase. With Sky Ranch, it was quite solid, not 100%, but it was solid enough to bring in a lot of private money, as well as public money from a number of jurisdictions. So that is a key element. But we'll have to assess that going forward, if the town decides to go forward. And we'd need something like a one-year option to clear up any contingencies and to secure the fundraising to close that kind of arrangement. So we're ready and happy to work with you.
Thank you, Bill.
Happy to have you.
Michelle Simonson, and I'm right over here across the street. And I have to confess, I don't know enough about all of the details about this, but I, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, I would like everything to be made into Marin Open Space, except maybe my place, so... But from what I, from what I do understand, that land, that's the wall property, this is only going to be, would only take away one of the properties, and so all of the rest would be still up for development? And so, I don't know, has the EIR been done yet?
No, there's, we'll be hopefully issuing the request for proposal soon for an EIR consultant. So the EIR has not been started yet. And we have not awarded anything to a consultant yet.
Okay, so would you make the purchase before the EIR was done?
So we're not going to be answering questions on that.
Okay, sure, I understand, I understand, okay.
Just wanted to clarify the EIR, which has been a source of confusion.
Okay, thank you. So, and I know that there's a lot of other potential places, and, you know, I don't know in terms of, I love the idea of fundraising and getting this property, and I'd like it all, if we could, if there was some way to do that. But I just wanted to make sure that whatever it is that we're doing is the best use of Fairfax's money, and to get us the most amount of open space that we can get. And thank you for everything you do.
Thank you, Michelle. Next speaker?
Alan Rosenthal, Fairfax Heights. I'm relatively new resident at Fairfax. I've been here for less than a year. And there is something quintessentially beautiful about this town that I want to hold on to. I love this town. I've only been here less than a year, but I've been here in, for many years, participating in the Fairfax Fair, for example, assisting other organizations that base their headquarters in Fairfax. And I knew for a long time that I wanted to come here. This particular property is, I find, very special. The entire neighborhood seems to congregate there at points, because it was mentioned that you can see from downtown that hillside. Similarly, on that hillside, you get to see downtown. You get to see, actually, some panoramic views that invite the residents of that neighborhood. I would be opposed, adamantly opposed, to having it developed. I think these open spaces are a treasure of the city. And yes, I understand the treasury is not infinite, but this is a particularly valuable piece of property that you preserve the way it is. You would improve the life quality that the residents, especially in Fairfax Heights, has. And I, for one, am urging the City Council to purchase, or to take the steps necessary to do what's necessary to prevent the unwanted intrusion of additional housing and, quite frankly, congestion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jessica Green, I live up on Ridgeway 154. And I have to say, I'm on both sides of the fence, because on one hand, I love that area. I'd rather not see that development up there. And on the other hand, I was at some neighborhood meetings where people that were victims of mudslides from, from the wall property. And I don't know exactly what part of, you know, that he's selling. But if he's selling the parts of that property, that's a liability, where Fairfax will have to face lawsuits if there are mudslides from it, then I think that's a problem. And maybe we could negotiate not taking those particular parts of it, you know, or get some geologist to figure out, you know, what's really a dangerous part for us to be buying. I mean, I'd love to see us, you know, have that land and not have it developed. But I do think we have to think about the liability, because there have been mudslides, and I've heard from the people that have had them below in Miranda. And I haven't seen a map of what, of what you guys are thinking about buying. And I think if we should determine, you know, which parts are liable, then we should not buy that part, you know? But it's a great idea to be able to keep the area, so that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica.
Hi, I'm Virginia Balo Rosenthal. I live at 125 Ridgeway, and that is right on the private road to the right of the fire road. So I think this would substantially affect my life. But as far as the community goes, there's a lot of fast-moving traffic, as there is right now, going up Ridgway. I mean, I'm surprised at how fast some people drive, and I just can't imagine that, you know, this development would bring a lot more traffic. Not only would it be a lot more traffic, but I would assume that those people would really feel entitled to drive as fast as they want to get to their brand-new homes up there. I just can't see how that would really benefit the community at all. And I think that should be something to take into consideration. Thank you.
Michael?
Hello, council. When I hear the argument of open space, it's certainly nice to acquire open space for the community. I also think of Victory Village, where we had open space and was promised by this council just recently that we'd have open space. And now it's given to somebody to sell for a profit of $1 million. The wall property, as you know, back, I think it's 2006, I made a deal and offered it to this town for free. So I hear all these arguments, and I watch this, and I just really wonder if we're really thinking what we're doing. I think if the town does acquire this property, you might want to look at acquiring a larger part of it. You might want to look at, instead of paying for something, make an exchange that if you give us this piece of property, so it can be an open space, A, you will indemnify us. If it's above your own parcels of people that live in this community, if there is land slippage, you will be on the hook, okay? And I think these things should really be looked at, because although the developer can and may or may not have insurance in the future, it generally does not ensure land loss or something from an act of God, but the town will be held accountable. So these things should be kept in the whole program for the entire parcel and how it's divided. I think you might get more leverage looking at protecting the space you want in exchange that you do something over here that's not as visible. Thank you.
Thank you. Did anyone else, Richard, are you wanting to speak on this item?
So, in the abstract, we all love open space, protecting it, and have as much as we can. But concerns that I have, and again, I'm going off different information from different sources that may not be in alignment with what you all believe or know to be true or not true. But since this number, 500,000, has been bandied about, I would just point out that that's a 300% profit to the owner of the property. I've spoken to Rothman several times, just at open space meetings and different things, and he assured me, I'm going to have trails and bike trails and hiking trails, and I'm going to clean out this and do that, and it's going to be the greenest thing, and I'm getting a Nobel Prize or whatever. So if he's really willing to do all of that, why are we going to spend the money and say that we're going to do all of that? So I want to be clear. I understand the neighbors up there, they congregate and they enjoy the beauty, and they're just saying, hey, we don't want all this mess coming our way, and like, keep it open. And I'm not against the neighbors, and I'm not against that. I'm just trying to understand whether this is a good use of our funds. The liabilities of this has been discussed. Frank has mentioned the guy that lived in town in the '70s for a year here and surveyed everything and found all the landslides and all the other problems. Nobody's seen the maps. We don't have any information. Rothman itself told me he did two more surveys on his own, he had more maps. And so it's very, very confusing what's really happening. And, you know, I'm not interested in giving a win to a developer to make profit off of us. And, you know, if he's really genuine, and, you know, he's trying to do a solid for the town, then, you know, sell it to us for the price he paid for it. Don't make a 3X profit on us. So there's that part of it. The other thing is, according to Frank and others that are providing information, it may not be developable. So do the various things in our rules and whatever, so I'm not even sure that he can put something on there. So until all of that is clear and fleshed out, I'm against this. And those are basically, those are my concerns. I'm also concerned about this thing that's gone around, that this wall property was 99 acres, and somehow it's magically 100 now, because that's a big difference in the UR-10 zoning, as we all know. One build for every 10. So when you get to 100, you've got 10 at 99, you're stuck at 9, and I'd like to really get some clarification on that at some point, too.
So just so you know, there's one parcel that's, I think it's UR-7, and that's how, it's 99 acres, but that's how you get to the 10.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. So anyway, those are my concerns.
Thank you, Richard. So would someone else like to speak on this topic?
Hi, I'm Helen Strodel. I live at, I have lived at 95 Chester for almost 40 years. I strongly encourage you to consider purchasing this piece of property. I think it's a very good idea, but I think we also, if there are problems with landslides, we definitely need an environmental impact report. But to protect that little corner of our town, I just, I think it's really a big deal to consider.
Judy Hitchcock, 90 Chester Avenue. I reiterate also what Helen just said. One of the considerations, and we've kind of gone through this before in the past, but if you have to pave that, make more development, that area, again, if there is a fire and all those people have to get out there, the more development you add and the more people that have to get there, there's some really safety concerns. So I would also support the town purchasing that for aesthetic reasons as well as safety reasons. Thank you.
Thank you.
Michelle Acosta, 95 Chester Avenue. And I totally agree that we should buy that piece of property if we can. It's going to stop any development, at least right up in that area, and we have traffic, fire danger, crowded streets, that you can only drive up one way on Willow and Chester and Ridgway. And so I just think to block further development up there would be a great thing.
Thank you. Mark?
Mark Bell. I can understand being on both sides of this issue. If I lived up there, I wouldn't want somebody building a house up there, but I also have to look at the whole wall property. I think he paid 1.7 million for the 99 acres that became this, even though you said there's like this seven-acre lot, still is being bandied about as 100 acres. I think if we're going to, if you're looking at spending 500,000 on open space, you've got to get more than 10 acres out of it, maybe like 31 acres. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lynette or Marinada Drive. I, too, don't want a bunch of cars coming past my house. Second generation there, I've seen the traffic increase like you wouldn't believe, because people always call it open space, which it's not, but they do anyway. So they think that there will be 100 more trips past my house a day, if you're lucky. It's also a dead end. We have fire hazards up there. So I'd like to have some of those lots bought up as well. I also don't like the idea that he's, they've grown, morphed from like 2,500 to 5,000 with a ton of pools, and it's a gated community now, at a dead end of my street. And I'm not happy about that. I'm not, you know, I guess if he bought the land, he bought the land, he's going to build something, but I think it would only be fair to cut the lots in half. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Tire of it. Would anybody else like to speak on this topic?
Good evening, Mayor, former colleagues. Michelle, just have a couple dozen more residents petitions signed. You have in front of you, we delivered the frequently asked questions and all of the documents, and so we don't have to go through them all, but just let me highlight just a few things that I hope we can get through in a few minutes. What do we really want the council to do today? We want you to authorize town staff, Most, Bill Long, and Mr. Rothman to begin the conversation to bring back to you in two months' time a contract for further consideration in this matter. Some of the other commentators spoke about the funds that are being employed here, but remember, while all money is important, we're talking about $100,000 approximately of the town's money. Conversations with the county have generously identified Measure A funds that sit within their coffers, and as Bill Long spoke to you about a little while ago, private funding in the amount of $300,000 would close that. So to pick up 10 acres of, as one of my neighbors, I think eloquently discussed, absolutely stunningly beautiful, important land and put it away protected forever, particularly by a council and by a town which adores its open space and its environmentalism. I look up at this council, and I don't think that there are five greater environmentalists on any council in America. And just as earlier today, we promoted the support of a young student at Drake and her work, so, and last time on straws with some even younger students who are heading off to DC. I think so here today. We follow in that tradition, and we lock up and preserve absolutely stunning land. I bring to your attention in the FAQs, the broad protections from liability that the California Legislature has identified and put into our state laws. I, of course, leave that to town council to discuss with you at greater length, but I would just suggest that one lawyer's reading of them, me, is that they are broad in their scope and protective of municipalities. Open space untouched, and that's what we're talking about here. Not touched, perhaps a bench that we would put up there for our seniors to be able to relax when they make the slow climb. But beyond that, this land would forever remain as it is now, and as I noted in one of the FAQs, as Lord and Lady Fairfax themselves might have seen when they were sitting in their home 150 years or so ago and enjoying the view across the valley. This is what they would have seen. There is no reason, and we don't have to go through the whole FAQs, but I presented both a picture of what the land looks like now and also what it will look like with the proposed house for Mr. Rothman. On the one last issue, Barbara, if you'll allow me, he has been steady on the 500K, and I believe he's a man of his word on this issue, and I would ask the council to promote the opportunity to move forward.
Thank you, David.
Thank you, Barbara.
Sierra Salem, Oak Manor. I don't know what to say or where to start. I probably spend more time on that land than most people do. Go through there probably three or four days a week. And all I can say is, basically what humans have done to this whole planet in the last 150 years pretty much breaks my heart, including Rothman and all of us. We've all got our cars, we've all got our pavement, we've all got our nimby's, we've all got our stuff, we've all got our trashcans. How do we create a future worth living in? I'm not sure. We've got problems. I don't really want to see Rothman make a profit for probably trying to off some steep land that's prone to slides and may not really even be very buildable to begin with. I don't know. I think we can probably get a whole lot better deal. I think we can prob, if we can get the funds, I think we should preserve it and we should buy it. But, you know, damn it, I think the whole system really sucks. And we've got to put our money and our time and our hearts, you know, where our hearts are. What do we want? What do we want the future to look like? And what kind of world do we want to have? It's kind of up to us. And Rothman's just there, it's like buying the land, making his money, making his profit, whatever it is. You know, God help us all, really.
Thank you, Sierra. Frank?
Frank Agar, Fairfax. This discussion this evening is not about to build or not to build on any of the wall property. Governmental agencies must do, while I'm speaking for say Fairfax, governmental agencies must do due diligence on properties they want to buy or sell, and sometimes courts require EIRs before an action. Your staff refuses to give you two general plan maps, landslide and fire hazards. Those maps were prepared by Wallace McCarth, Roberts and Todd Land Use Consultants that Fairfax hired in 1974. The data for those maps came from the California Division of Mines and Geology, Fairfax and Marin County Fire Departments. That's where all the data from those two maps came from. Fairfax has always had a reputation for landslides. The geology of Fairfax was so hazardous that the California Department of Mines and Geology sent a geologist, his name was Ted Smith, to live at Fairfax for over one year. He worked, he walked every street in town and mapped all of the landslides from category one to category fours. They are shown on Fairfax's landslide maps. When Fairfax Open Space Committee asked to see the maps of staff, staff said they were out of date. I can assure you, those maps are not out of date. I was first elected in 1966, in the late '60s, early '70s, there was a landslide from the parcel that you're talking about purchasing that blew through a home on St. Gabriel Court. Fairfax and Dr. Wall pursued. The town council met in closed session, and we ended up helping to pay to rebuild that Legally, you cannot subdivide that 18-acre parcel. The, the construction of a road from Ridgway to the top of the hill was voted down twice by Fairfax Town Councils. If you try to subdivide an acre, 18-acre parcel, one parcel, one piece of it's going to be under the minimum lot size. Last year, 25 residents signed a petition for staff to research public access issues that occurred before 1972. We turned that into the town council one night. We've never heard a word. I don't know whatever happened to that. The developer's proposal for the 99-acre wall property does not meet the purpose and intent of the Upland Residential Zone that was modeled after Marin County's A60 Zone. Clustering is-
Frank, can you wrap it up?
I will, I will. Clustering is not allowed. There has been no vesting tentative map on the wall property. It's never been proposed or approved by Fairfax. Much of that land cannot meet Fairfax development standards. Complete the EIR first before you make any decision that will impact the developer's project.
Thank you.
I thought I had five minutes, you know?
Are you representing your-
Say Fairfax, I said that.
Okay, I'm sorry. Apologize.
I'm almost finished up anyway here. Let me finish this up. Your proposal to Fairfax, take your proposal to the Fairfax Open Space Committee and ask them for a recommendation. You know, they constantly deal with the kinds of issues of ridgestop development, and you need to get their recommendation. You know, the developer should have done due diligence before buying the 98 acres for $1.25 billion. Complete the wall environmental impact report first. Don't saddle Fairfax taxpayers with future landslide liability. It would be almost impossible to evacuate homeowners from that parcel in case of a fast-moving wildland fire like either the tubs or campfire. That alone would probably stop development of that 10-acre parcel. Don't predetermine the outcome of the proposed subdivision of the wall property by subdividing off 10 acres before the environmental impact report is completed. Eight months ago, staff said it was preparing an EIR. This is an absolute prerequisite. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Hello, my name is Victor Harris. I live at 160 Willow Avenue, and I have for the past 36 years. What you just heard from Mr. Egger is ill-advised. Do not, it's not wise to go forward with an EIR on 10 lots, because once Rothman and his limited liability company spend the money to get that EIR on- his limited liability company spend the money to get that EIR on 10 lots, he'll be saying the same thing that he has said in previous meetings, which is, "I would have sold the property to you, all of it, for less, but now I have to recoup my costs." What you can get for $500,000 now will be, what, $800,000 later? Is that what you want? I don't think so. And the second thing is that separating this piece of this one lot is not subdividing anything. It's permitted by law, as your council. And finally, there is nothing more important here than the traffic problems that we've got in Fairfax. Willow Avenue County, Willow Avenue Canyon is a congested mess now. Add an extra road, which would happen if that upper parcel were developed rather than leaving it in open space, and you'll have a further cause for disaster. More liability on your hands. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak on this topic? Ruth?
Ruth Horn, 11 Upper Ridgeway, and I've been there just about 42 years and a couple days. I remember walking around that hill to San, above San Gabriel after, I think it was the 83 rains, and it had washed out the path near the end, and it was down in the yard down there, and I don't know exactly what part of San Gabriel that is, but that did happen. And I'm so glad Victor came by. I'm on the Open Space Committee, and they forwarded the articles from the paper, and we just didn't know what to do at our meeting at the end of last month. So I'm so glad Victor came by with his petition, and we got some people out. Two people had to leave tonight. One had school tomorrow, and the other one was from Sinek, and she wanted to see the pop property purchased. And we have some people watching by television, too, about three different people. So there are issues with this. I know I have talked to a couple down on San Gabriel. The husband has been here since the houses were built in about 1956, and he knows where these landslides were. He's lived in a couple different houses there, and he's, his wife, they both became widow and widower, and they ended up marrying. And he's 92, and spoke very well to me a couple weeks ago, and he knows the particulars of what happened. He was very sharp about it, although he has pneumonia the last time I called. So it would be good to explore this lot. It's a beginning for who knows what's going to happen with the rest of the wall property, but even to begin and to find, have some kind of debate with all the issues that Frank talked about, and, well, we could list them and maybe bring it before the Open Space Committee, too. And I've been discussing things with Bill Long, so I know that, and we've, other parts of the committee worked with him on getting Sky Ranch. And certainly it was a disappointment that after he presented what they did on another property, that the people on Miranda Drive didn't take it forward, so that we could have, before the Rothman came in, have done something to purchase the whole property.
Thank you, Ruth. Thank you. I just want to clarify, you're not speaking on behalf of the entire Open Space Committee. You're speaking as a resident, correct?
I'm speaking as a resident.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments.
Great. Thanks.
Would anybody else like to speak on this topic? So bringing it back, just, first of all, I want to thank everyone who came out tonight and spoke. I also want to thank the residents who worked hard on the petition and put together FAQs or presentation, I'm not sure what we call that. So we appreciate the effort that everybody's come to. We appreciate people voicing their concerns on both sides and all the effort that it took to come here. And as I said before, I know it's very difficult. It takes a lot of courage to stand up here, and we get used to it, but I know it's hard for people to come up. I also want to mention is, timing is really a problem. And as you know, and I've discussed before, the council has discussed this proposal, and as we've stated after our two closed sessions, we're not inclined to consider this proposal at this time. And I'd like to briefly explain some of the concerns the council has about the timing of this proposal. The town has accepted and is processing an application for development on this property. The process for consideration of this application must be followed. The first step is to hire an environmental impact report consultant to complete the environmental review, and we're hopeful that we can get the request for proposal out very soon and hopefully get a contractor on board before the end of the summer, and then it will take time to prepare the EIR. Once the EIR is complete, the application moves to the planning commission and then on to the council. When the project is before the council, which will be sometime, the council will be able to discuss all aspects of the project. Because the town has a completed application before it, it would not be appropriate for the council to discuss any aspect of the project before the public hearing on this And I will add, though, that there are some concerns any public entity would have when considering purchasing open space, which include the cost of ongoing maintenance, including wildfire management. Remember that maintenance costs continue as long as the entity owns the land. And at one point with Sky Ranch, which I worked on personally, we had an agreement that the Marin County Open Space District would take over that property and take over the maintenance, which they're well suited to do. This is what they do. This is not really what the town of Fairfax does, nor do we have the resources to really take on this kind of thing. Some other options that I think residents could consider include pooling funds and doing fundraising to purchase the property themselves, and at this time, potentially working with Most on something like that. And one of the options that could come out of this, one of the cleaner ways to do this would be to look at purchasing a conservation easement. And that kind of thing ensures that the current property on her continues the maintenance, gets recorded against the deed, it would stay as open space. But really, as I'm pointing out, timing is really critical here. We're not there yet. I urge the residents to consider these and other options because due to the timing of the proposal, the council simply is not able to address the issue tonight or at this time. So thank you all, and we appreciate your patience in sitting through our long meeting. So that, we're moving on to the budget. Lost my budget. Okay, so, no, it's not 11 o'clock, it's 11:30. We'll make that just.
Yeah, 10 o'clock is the deciding.
No, we're going to do 11:30 in a few minutes. We have 11:30, too.
Yeah, that's 11:30.
Yeah, we'll take that up. Okay, so we're moving on to item 15, which is discuss, consider the residents' petition for the, oh, I'm sorry, I'm a little confused, excuse me. Discuss, consider fiscal year 2019, 2020, proposed operating and capital improvement budget. And I'm not sure, is the town manager doing this report? Would you like to go ahead, town manager?
Sure. So this is your public hearing for the budget, as you stated, you do this public hearing, and then after this public hearing, then we bring back the proposed final budget to you for approval back in your July meeting. And so as we go through this, the 1920 budget, although I guess this is for the residents at home, since you have all seen this at the budget workshop, but your budget's a total of 13, the proposed budget's a total of 13.7 million, 10.7 million is for general fund appropriations, 1.9 million for capital improvement projects, and then special funds debt service represent another 1.1 million. We had indicated at your workshop in May that we were going to draw down some general fund reserves. One thing for me to point out is, in May, the number we thought we would draw down for general fund reserves would be 180,000. What you received in your packet, we did some adjustments, clarified some numbers, it came back at about 120,000, but I believe we just handed out some revised sheets for the budget. We had to do some other adjustments, we missed some things, and it really turns out the drawdown's going to be in the middle. You'll try draw down about 150,000 from general fund reserves, and that's really for one-time expenses. You're purchasing a software, new financial software for the town, that's 100,000, probably somewhere between 35 and 40,000 higher than in the subsequent years, and so those are really type of one-time costs. And your financial software, you really have been saving for it for the last five, six fiscal years. You may recall from your budget workshop on May 10th, you added 30,000 to the chipper day budget, increasing it from the proposed 60 to 90. In comparison to fiscal year 1819, it's actually up by 70 because we only budgeted 20,000 last year, and we're proposing to budget that at 90. One of the questions from your workshop was how do we handle the open space fund? So as a matter of practice, what your finance director and myself recall, the council indicated is we budget 4,000 every year to the open space fund. Whatever they don't use, we roll that into the fund balance, and that goes right into the fund balance for open space, and we budgeted another 4,000. So the question to the council is, would you like us to continue that practice or follow a different practice, which we used to do, which we would budget 4,000, and whatever they spent, we would just replenish that for the following year, but we wouldn't roll the surplus funds into the fund balance? So we're just kind of seeking direction on this one.
So may I speak to this? Usually I wait for other folks, but I was on the Open Space Committee for years, and I was on the council at the time, Councilmember Bragman, and I believe myself proposed the $4,000. And that was, that was really with the intention, it was kind of buying T-shirts and all this kind of extra stuff, that we didn't want to do fundraising for that. And so my feeling is this way. That was really considered for incidentals, that's a pretty huge amount for incidentals, but I wouldn't argue that point. I mean, I know the Climate Action Committee gets about 500, and then also, but they have a different mission, and also even the volunteers get a little bit for incidentals, but they also get staff support, which open space doesn't get. So I would say this, I believe the intention back when Councilmember Bragman, and I believe I, proposed this, was the idea that they would always have $4,000. And I, you know, not that they would continue to add it, this wasn't the idea of creating a piggy bank for acquisitions. That's something we're doing with Measure A funding every year. And I think maybe in the future, we may want to revisit this amount in general, but I think for now, I think the policy, which I know we don't have it written down, should be that they just are whole with $4,000, but we don't continue to add to it. So that's my thoughts based on my prior experiences, open space, and I just want to say this, when I was on the Open Space Committee, I created the first budget for the Open Space Committee, which we gave to the prior finance director. And we were, every year when I was there, maybe we did it a couple years and then I got on the council or something, but we would figure out what our budget was. And then when I left, that stopped. So I don't think it's necessary that they prepare a budget, but I just think we shouldn't be allocating this amount of money every year when that wasn't what I believe it was originally intended for. So that's my long-winded, I'm sorry, it's late at night, I can't stop.
What are the merits, actually, of continuing their 4,000 per year? What would be the benefit of that, besides creating a piggy bank? In case something comes up, they'd have money in the fund.
So the idea was, in the past, they would purchase things like flyers, they would purchase banners, they would do T-shirts, those kinds of things, and we wanted the fundraising to be exclusively for purchasing open space, so we didn't want to have this peripheral amount. And where did the $4,000 come from? I have no clue. That may have been at the time what we thought the need was. So it may be that it's worthwhile to say 2,000 for now, and then revisit it and see where they're at.
Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Going back a little farther in history, and I think it was probably in the 90s or something, it came to light that a town over near Power Lane had been built on a public, piece of public land, public right-of-way, and--
A house.
A house had been built, sorry, it is late at night. A house had been built on public right-of-way, and they wanted to do, you know, that happened in the 50s or 60s, with not a lot, a lot of stuff like that happened then. And so that came to light because they wanted to do, you know, they take out a permit to do some stuff on their house. And so it came to light that part of the house was built on the public right-of-way that wasn't really being used. People were walking a different way to get up and down the hill. And so I believe it was $26,000 that was paid to the town, and then that money was used for a number of different things that was always paid back to this fund that was part of the town's budget that, you know, had a line item for that. And then when the Open Space Committee was created, that, within a year or two, that 26,000 was then used for an open space project and then paid back, and it went back and forth a couple of times, and then after a while, it started just sitting with open space, and then a--
Pay it back, because I was on the--
Yeah, that got paid back a number of times. And then I believe it was the property up at the top of Willow that got purchased a number, you know, that 26 went towards that.
Guys, I'm sorry, we have so many more things to do.
Can we just--
Yeah, I mean, so anyway, that's a little history. I agree with you, Barbara, that I don't think we should be lumping another, that's a lot for incidentals. You know, I mean, you can buy things that you can then sell to raise money, to purchase open space things and kind of--
Okay, so--
Do that, but it's a lot for that.
So why don't we do something like, say, 2,000, revisit it? Because there were things, like there was a little bit of money we needed to buy that parcel up on Ridgeway, and we raised some, we had some money raised. But why don't we just say 2,000 and keep it at that and not continue to replenish it?
Okay, so can we just keep it at 4, because it, we--
Let's keep it at 4.
It changes all these other pages. So let's keep it at 4, but we won't roll it into the fund balance, whatever--
So we're not adding another 4?
No. So what we're doing is, I think what we're proposing or what makes sense is, they would, if they spend money, that's fine, the next year, whatever they don't spend, we're not putting into fund balance, we would just re-budget another 4.
But this year, are we throwing another 4,000 in?
Well, yes, that's what we did. From last year, we took whatever was not spent, and we rolled that--
No, okay, just let's be clear.
4,000, new funding this year, that's correct.
Why are we doing that? Just so we won't screw up the page? Why are we doing that, just so we won't screw up the pages?
No, we, we put the four thousand in because that was continuation from the past years.
But, that's money they haven't spent. We're not putting new four thousand in. Why? You know, your mic needs to be on, Mike.
Thank you.
The policy did not say give them a new four thousand dollars every year.
But, that's what we've done for the last five years.
Our understanding was, what was not spent, rose in the general fund, they start over. If you're telling us right now, now hear this, this is four thousand, it doesn't roll into the fund balance, we won't roll the money in from last year into the fund balance, we'll just take it out, what that number is.
Okay, so, it's a new four thousand, but we take out the old. Okay, let's do that.
Okay.
That's probably just complicated.
That will change, that'll change numbers, but that's fine.
Okay.
Well, then, what's the total budget for the open space now? Is it like twenty thousand?
No, it's four, four every year.
It's four every year, but then, where does that money go? Is it, is there a pool of four thousand times five years equals twenty thousand dollars now?
Mike would have to say how much we've rolled into their fund balance since we started doing this.
Yeah, if, if, if you, if you go back to two thousand seventeen, open space spent a total of six hundred and sixty-one dollars. Okay, we gave them four thousand, they spent six hundred and sixty-one. In two thousand eighteen, we gave them another four thousand, and they spent fifteen hundred dollars. Okay? So, we budgeted for nineteen, four thousand more dollars. So, that's a total of twelve at, at that point.
So, right now, I'm looking at the budget page, they have forty thousand five five nine.
What page is that?
It's page seventy-three on the budget.
Seventy-three, right. Page number actually matches the fund number, go figure.
Right, so, I think for purposes of moving forward, we should not debate this. Let's just do whatever you want to do, but next year, we don't give them any new money.
Okay.
Because we have, as Renee points out, we got a lot of fish to fry.
Got it.
Not those words, I did.
Okay, great, so we can move on.
Could I just throw something out? I agree. And could we maybe have a discussion with the open space committee? Just to ask them what they are using it for, and give them a chance to not just have it pulled out from under them? I would like that to happen.
We're still budgeting before, but we could talk to them.
I'm just talking about going forward.
I think that's really appropriate.
This year, we're not doing anything different, but I think we really need to do that.
So, Garrett, at some point, would you meet with them? And I'll go with you.
We used to meet with him and go through it, and it would just, you know.
They get mad.
You put numbers in there, and it doesn't matter.
Okay, that's fine.
That's a good point. Okay, so, where else are we going? Keep going.
Okay, so, those are your two questions. There's really, well, I guess there is one member in the public. But, just briefly, this is pie chart of the budget, shows where the sources of the ten point six million that we need to fund operations. You'd see property taxes, fifty-five percent, sales tax is a little over thirteen, and you have your Measure J is roughly six. But, if you count your sales tax, property tax, and Measure J together, that represents seventy-five percent of your general funds revenues right there. So, it's a pretty large chunk. This table, and all this stuff is in the budget, this kind of shows general funds that aren't restricted, per se. You can see property taxes only going up by about two point four percent, sales tax get about six percent. And then, your franchise fee went up just because of the increase in Marin sanitary services contract. Other revenues, most of that's made above a huge increase in interest due to interest rates rising. Terms of other revenue highlights, that we don't count in that last table, you're planning building fees, it's really at the same level as eighteen nineteen. The retirement fund is actually transferring a little over two, about two hundred and twenty-five thousand into the general fund. We do that every once in a while, when there's a fund balance in the retirement fund, we just bring in a little bit more. And then, next year, we, we bring in, we bring in less. It just depends. For your other revenues, about fifty thousand more, most of that is because the COPS grant has a fund balance of about thirty thousand. So, we brought in a little bit more, and we have a little more gas tax that we transferred over into the general fund. Terms of where the money goes to, no surprise, sixty percent goes to police and fire. And then, it's spread out among the other departments.
That's a general fund?
Yes, that's the, that's the general fund.
Okay.
Then, in terms of expenditure highlights, I think we talked about this, your total general fund appropriations compared to last year is up by about five point five percent, close to about five hundred and forty thousand. Fire is going up by about four point eight percent. Part of that is related to contractual service. We have increases in retirement, medical costs. But, that budget also has the money we budget for vegetation management, and that added another twenty-five. Salary and wages went up, health costs went up by six percent. And then, obviously, we have our unfunded liability costs. But, the town does benefit in that seven of our eleven officers are actually under pension reform, so we save a lot there. And then, it's the council, you're aware, we eliminated retiree health benefits for anyone hired after July first, two thousand thirteen. Say, here's a huge benefit. Non-operating expenses, you know, you have that chipper days cost of a seventy thousand increase compared to the previous fiscal year. We have some increases for the restructure of Recreation and Community Services. And in this year's budget, we're not planning to prepay any retirement, OPEC liability, with the caveat, we'll take a look at the mid-year budget, see where we're at, and we might make, recommend some pre-funding to the council. Terms of, these are charts that we have, you could see these match up with our percentages. You can see the retirement side fund, six percent, other operating, it's ten and a half percent. But, as I indicated, that kind of reflects that increase in chipper days compared to last year. We have increases in insurance, and then, other things increased, like the Humane Society Animal Control Contract. Terms of where your funding goes, you could see about forty-five percent, almost fifty percent goes to salaries and benefits. Contract services represents forty percent. But, what does that mean? And you'll see for your fire contract, represents about seventy percent of your contractual services. Your town attorney, that's a contract, that's a hundred and ninety thousand a year. Other actually includes the otter, that's another sixty. And so, if you just include that, almost eighty percent or so of your costs are wrapped up in fire and contractual services that you're required to get, not for what other people refer to as hiring consultants. Your other departments, Public Works is engineering, some out type tree vendors, those type of contractors. Your non-departmental, again, that's things like your member agency fees, your insurance, what we put aside for deductibles each year. General fund reserves, we had reported out at the workshop, your general fund reserves consists of roughly eight general funds, based on the audit. And this number is a little lower than what we presented at the proposed workshop, at the budget workshop. It's about four million, right now, start the year, forty percent of your fund balance. It's two hundred and twenty thousand higher than where we thought we would start, based on our fiscal eighteen nineteen projection. Fund balance is somewhat affected by how we get reimbursements. So, the example is, you know, we're submitting for reimbursement for Forest Avenue, about three hundred thousand. If it comes in by September, that goes into fund balance this fiscal year. But, if it doesn't, then it's considered part of next year, and so, that might, might affect what the starting ending fund balances are. However, the good news is, we're projecting that our fund balance for fiscal year nineteen twenty is going to be about three point nine million, about thirty-six percent reserves. What's interesting about that number is actually higher than what we thought. It's higher than the projected number for eighteen nineteen. So, eighteen nineteen, we thought we'd have a lower number. This is even higher than that number. And then, the next slide just shows where the reserves come from, as you're aware. You have council policy that designates designated, undesignated funding. And really, one that's really only truly restricted is your retirement fund. You can only use that for retirement expenses. And that shows the breakout of the thirty-six percent. Five-year forecast, we had gone over this. And in essence, what this shows is, over the five-year period, that pretty much revenues and expenditures pretty much match.
And this is assuming the renewal of Measure J?
Right, it assumes a renewal of Measure J, continuation, obviously, of your existing revenues. We've made some adjustments. In the five-year forecast, you'll see in fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, you get a little spike in your reserves, and that's really related to the issue of you will have paid off your pension side fund. So, you'll get a benefit of two hundred.
What year is that again?
Fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two.
Great.
You'll save some, I think the first year, you'll save two hundred and fifty thousand, and it slowly ratchets it down. In the five-year forecast, we made pretty much modest revenue growth and expenditure, except assumptions. In terms of the five-year capital improvement project program, this is actually different from the proposed budget workshop, which you saw. We refined the numbers, and it's actually one point nine million. I believe at the budget workshop, we might have had a number of over three million. Part of that is, we had the schedule and the timing wrong for the bridge projects. Those are actually going to be occurring years in the future, not a couple of when we had in this fiscal year in the proposed budget. So, we've corrected that. Overall, your capital improvement budget, it's about six hundred thousand than the previous year. Five-year CIP is about fourteen point seven million. That's just to give you a guide, most of that's going to be for bridge projects. We rebudget funds for each year, and you have a whole variety of funding, Measure J, C, gas tax, Measure A, TAM money, or now, it's going to be Measure AA. Terms of street improvements, we've budgeted about five hundred and twenty thousand. That's a little lower than the five sixty you budgeted in your previous fiscal year. Money comes from the county loan, Measure A TAM funds, and Measure C. What, pretty much, we kept pretty much the same. Street surface repair, a hundred, scenic road, that's Upper Scenic, a hundred and forty thousand. We still have Canyon Road, and then, street maintenance, which is what we try to match up to the pavement management plan.
What about frustack, which we were going to do last year, about, it was too wet?
Frustack would come out of street resurfacing and repair, is what we're planning to do. Although, it, we're checking with the contractor, he may start in June, is a possibility, in which case, it would come out of the current fiscal year.
Okay.
So, we're trying to still figure that out. But, the slight difference is really related to you've completed, you completed lower, the scenic portion from Chapera to Bay and Mono, so.
Thank you.
So, bridge projects, by the end of June ten, most of that's funded with federal and state grants, some of it's matching.
What about the repairs to Meadowway Bridge?
Repairs to Meadowway.
Are they on bridge projects, or are they somewhere else?
That actually would have to come out of somewhere else. Generally, let me think, did I put that in there? I, I, right now, off the top of my head, I can't remember where we put that in.
But, we definitely need to allocate that funding.
Yeah, so, it'll be about, well, we're waiting for Caltrans to see if they'll do a reinspection of the bridge. Yeah, I don't know, I stuck it in there. I'll have to take a look. It's definitely in the budget somewhere, just can't remember where.
Okay, as long as it's in there.
Okay, non-road projects. So, in here, we have the preliminary design for the pavilion, we have the women's club. We could continue with the trail and Perry Park improvements. We actually have Perry Park improvements in there, replacing the park equipment, as well as exercise equipment, if we get the, thanks, the AARP grant.
Which we should hear Monday.
Oh, is it Monday?
It's July, it's June ten.
Oh, okay. Well, we'll hear Monday, hopefully.
Cross your fingers.
Okay. Downtown sidewalk repair, again, that actually includes a large portion from the AARP grant, sidewalk repairs, and then FEMA repairs. Can I think, did I do that right? Some reason, some reason, I think for the pavilion, I might have left a number off, because I think I included two hundred thousand from the park bond money that we should be getting sometime this year, so.
That's for the roof.
For the, right, for the roof. But, I think that's actually in the CIP, and maybe Michael could check. I think I wrote it wrong on the slide. And as you are aware, we have future funding issues related to consider, the one being renewal of the special municipal tax, which is on this agenda. We're still in the midst of conducting our fee study. And some of the things I just want to point out, and this slide shows, obviously, if you don't get a renewal of Measure J, you have some pretty catastrophic effects to your budget. Within two years, your fund balance would drop down to twenty percent. At the five-year period, it would drop down to below ten, which would mean you'd have some serious cash flows. Obviously, that assumes you wouldn't make any changes in expenditures, which you obviously would at that time. Terms of use of Measure J funds, this really, this really just shows over the five-year period, seventy-five percent of your funds have gone to fund public safety, so fire and police. This past year, it's about eighty percent, but on the average, it's about seventy-five percent of those funds are used for police and fire. This slide shows, if you didn't do anything, what the impact to your fund balance would be. And in terms of future funding options, some things to think about is, obviously, renewal Measure J, which we'll have to talk about. This included a five-dollar-a-year increase in the Measure J from one ninety-five to two hundred, and obviously, five dollars each subsequent year, that's built into this revenue number. You have some other things to look at, but the one thing I wanted to point out is annexation. Actually, this next three years, actually, LAFCO, Local Agency Formation Commission, for the counties be looking at, conducting what's called a municipal service review for Ross Valley. And so, I've asked them to kind of take a look at these annexation issues, and just what the feasibility of that would be. And by doing it now, we actually save, because they're conducting the study anyway, so there's no cost to us to start exploring that. And I think, increase fees and permits, that's planning, building fees, but it also could be other fees that we could take a look at. And really, like we indicated, just the public hearing, and any comments you gave us, we'd incorporate into the final budget that we'd bring back to you on July seventeenth. We could do narrative changes, you don't necessarily have to provide that to us now, you could give it to us separately. Terms of narratives, I know the mayor's provided some. We'll do as many as we can. With our major caveat is, we try not to pay, change the pagination, or shift numbers around that to require us to do a whole lot of work trying to reconcile the numbers. And yes, in my presentation, pavilion's budget actually is two hundred and eighty thousand. Sixty-five of that is for, for the, what am I thinking of? Oh, design and archaeological studies. And then, the, I believe, the remainder, I forget what the math is, but I think the remainder, then, is for the money we'll get from the state for.
The park bond.
For the park bond, and what our suggestion would be, use it to replace the roof.
So, and you had a supplement that corrected certain pages, correct?
Yes, yes, we had a supplement.
I don't think it's worth talking about the detail, we all have that.
Yeah, and all that did was, it just explained how our drawdown of the general fund's going to be a hundred and fifty thousand instead of a hundred and twenty. But, it's still lower than what we presented at the budget workshop.
So, let me ask, if anybody has any questions of staff, otherwise, I can't open the public hearing. Any questions? Okay, so, I know Adrian, I would like to open the public hearing. Would you, did you have any interest in commenting during the public hearing? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back, and I'd like to close the public hearing. And are there any revisions to the actual budget? It's not necessary if you don't have any, but it looks like Peter has something.
Yeah, so, a couple items kind of related to the Climate Action Committee. Walter Vernon, who just joined our committee, recently did a audit, energy efficiency audit of the town facilities. And we wanted to implement budgets of money to start implementing some of the efficiencies, some of the simpler tasks that could be done. And so, I wanted to propose a fairly modest allocation of twenty thousand dollars. Doesn't necessarily mean that we would be spending that in this year.
To who?
To.
It would be the town, it wouldn't be the Climate Action Committee, right?
No, it's the town, but the town allocate twenty thousand dollars to implement energy efficiency upgrades recommended in the energy audit that Walt Vernon did.
So, can I ask either Mike or Garrett if there's a place that could go? Where would you put that?
We would put it in Fund Oh Five, it's called Building Improvement, and that's where we save money to do things like this. And I did speak to council member Lacks and suggested, we would put it there in their appropriations. We give it a different code number, but that's where we'd put it.
Okay, so, you have a place for that? Okay, very good.
And that will, that will also start to save money in terms of utility bills and so forth. And then, we wanted to.
Ben, you're leaving for your item?
I said I would just do it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, can I?
Adrian is, is sticking with us, thank you.
And then, another allocation I wanted to make was two thousand dollars for the Climate Action Committee, and mostly for incidentals and materials to do outreach work. And so, that, that's the ask for that, for two thousand, two thousand dollars for the next year. And then, Bruce, you had a, there was also an allocation for the.
Bruce, you need to turn your mic on?
Right, it is late. The third thing is that the, as, as Walt Vernon spoke about, the Climate Action Committee is going to be proposing in, in more detail, or coming, bringing to the council the proposal that the town can. that the town consider a self-tax, only on town operations, of carbon tax, essentially. This would, that, this would be estimated to come out about thirty-six hundred a year, and that would then be put into a fund, it would essentially be like a fee and dividend thing. So, the, the town would tax itself for the carbon, which tax would get lower if we do efficiency improvements, but starting out at around thirty-six hundred a year, that money would go into a fund, which would then be available for citizens to be able to do improvements.
Why don't we do this?
And that, so, the question was putting a thirty-six hundred dollar placeholder.
I think that's premature. I would suggest, when you're ready, that we put that as an item on consent.
Well, that was, this really was a suggestion of Garrett's, that maybe, that it might be preferable to put a placeholder in now.
Okay.
Even though we haven't approved that idea, but put in the placeholder just to be able to get the budget.
Yeah, just to have it available.
I'm neutral either way whether we put the placeholder in, but that was the suggestion, right, that.
Do you have a place for it now?
So, right now, CAC, the budget falls under the Town Council, so the two thousand, we would put there, that's where we put it, although, if you wanted to, we could move the CAC over to what we refer to as non-departmental, and stick it there.
I would say this, so, I sat on the CAC for three years, and I think this item needs to be worked out, and I think we have to hear more about it before we put in a placeholder for it. I think the two thousand is great, and the twenty thousand for the energy efficiency, that sounds like those are done, but I have concerns about putting in a placeholder for something that's a whole new, interesting concept, and I think we, I think we should hear more about it, as it gets worked out through CAC.
Can I clarify, then, on the budget for Town Council and for CAC, we currently have five hundred dollars, I'm going to make that two thousand dollars.
Yeah, right.
Okay, so add fifteen hundred, make it two thousand.
Yeah, okay. So, could we just wait on that, as, as that item gets worked out more, and we hear more about it? Because I think it's a great idea, but I think we should hear more about it.
It's a little undeveloped, for sure, and I'm, but just wanted to do what we might need to do to reserve that in, in our budget.
Well, I think we could do it in the mid-year, if it gets developed by then.
Sure, I think, I think that we'll have a little clearer picture.
That would be great.
If that's okay with Garrett, that's okay with me, yeah.
He's nodding his head.
Okay.
Okay, is, is that, I just have one thing, is, I just want to make sure that a FRESTEC does not get done this year, that we included, I think you suggested not doing a whole new CIP page for it, Garrett, but you would put it under fifty-one, eight-one-three. And then, to also make sure that we have the Meadowway Bridge repairs at some point in the budget, if they're not there already, because that's actually a big chunk of change. And then, just to mention that I provided a lot of detailed comments, and I understand that you don't want to change pages, I get that, but you did say you would try to accommodate my changes to the extent feasible, just to make it more clear. And I think in the future, one of our goals should be that we really start looking at that stormwater fee, even if it does have to go to a vote, we know that that deadline is hitting in a few years, so I think we should start really thinking about that stormwater runoff fee. Maybe we put in a goal, and, like some of the other fees that are in there, some of those would go to a vote as well. So, okay.
Just one question, maybe Garrett or Mike, if you could point out where in the budget the fire inspection is fee, the, the, the money for doing the home fire inspections is?
It's, it's in the fire budget, that's four, four eleven, let's see, the page.
Oh, here it is, on page twenty-two. Is, oh.
Yeah, page thirty-six, page thirty-six.
Oh, okay.
Ross Valley Fire Fund O one, Activity four-two-one, it says, inspection slash prevention, we put a hundred thousand there, and part of that, that's what we use to pay Ross Valley Fire for the fire inspection program.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, so, I think we have discussed, considered revisions to the proposed budget, we appreciate that. And now, we need to do the eleven, waive the eleven-thirty rule, so.
I move waiving the eleven-thirty rule.
Okay, would somebody like to second?
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so, moving on to item seventeen, and that is adoption of resolution calling for the general municipal election, for the election of certain officers. And Garrett, or Michelle, did you want to do the town report, the council report?
How about the staff report? I'll do the staff report.
Thank you.
So, as you know, you have two councilmember seats expiring at, this November, so they'll be up for election, that's for Councilmember Lacks and.
Thank you, Mike.
Vice Mayor Goddard. Also, the town clerk, that's me, and town treasurer Janet Garvin's seats will be up for election. Couple of years ago, in 2017, California passed the Voter Participation Rights Act, and requires us to move our regular general municipal election from odd years to even years. So, this will be the second regular election, we stagger our elections, so you have three council seats, those were in 2017, now the 2019, we have the two council seats, and the treasurer and the clerk. This is our last odd-year election, and you adopted an ordinance saying, in order to switch it over to even years, the terms would be reduced by one year. So, this is again, for three-year terms. I don't know if you have any questions?
Okay, well, that was very clear, thank you very much.
You're welcome, Madam Mayor, my pleasure.
And, did anyone have any questions? Town Clerk, Michelle Gardner. No, seeing none, are there any questions from members of the public? Seeing none, bring it back. Would somebody like to make a motion to adopt the resolution?
I will move to adopt the resolution. I should probably read the subject.
Yeah, let's go ahead.
Got to do it.
Adopt the resolution calling for a general municipal election to be held on November fifth, 2019, for the election of certain officers regarding the, requesting the Marin County Board of Supervisors to consolidate with any other election conducted on that date, and requesting election services of the County Elections Department.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, that measure passes. Okay, moving on to item eighteen, which is adopt a resolution for a special municipal election to be held on November fifth, for the purpose of submitting its renewal of Measure J. I'm sorry, I'm summarizing, I hope our member of the public understands. He appears to be smiling, and gave me a thumbs up, so that's good.
It may have a short name, but it's very important.
Okay, so, is this, the town manager is giving the staff report?
Only unless the town clerk would like to.
She doesn't want to.
Okay. Thanks.
I can tell she doesn't want to.
But you kind of covered it in the.
I did, in the, in the, in the budget. But, yes, in essence, this is the item, adopting the resolution to place the renewal of Measure J, the special municipal tax, on the ballot. You know, as you know the history, it was first enacted in March two thousand and five, and the last time you did it, in two thousand and fourteen, you actually did some consolidation, slightly improved, increased the amount, and it's now at the hundred and ninety-five per unit, generates about seven hundred and ten thousand a year, six percent of our operating budget, so it's pretty huge. In terms of, at your last meeting, you talked about it in April and May, and some of the things you talked about was the amount. You talked about extending it for eleven years, and then increasing it, putting language in to increase it by five dollars per year. One of the questions to the council is, is the first year, are you thinking the first year would be a hundred and ninety-five, or the first year would be two hundred dollars? That's one question. The other question is, I know you selected the eleven-year, because what eleven-year means you could take it to the ballot, a general election in 2030, because it would expire in 2031. However, in these type of election things, you know, there's some thought pattern that ten, eleven might sound too long, but maybe you pick nine, and that sounds better to the voters, but that would mean that you would go back to the voters, obviously, in eight years. So, that's some direction we need. We, it actually gave you a revision to the ballot language, because we.
We have that, thank you.
Okay, and what that does is, we're supposed to put in what the annual cost is, or revenue generated, so that was one of the things we added, and we added it back in, because we forgot, was the local wildfire prevention, or whatever language you put in there related to that.
Wildfire prevention efforts, we added that in.
We put that in there. Now, one of the other things, too, that you're asking for tonight, is we're asking you to designate councilmembers to author the ballot arguments, and rebuttals if needed, and to find signers for the arguments and rebuttals. In the past, the, all five councilmembers were the signers for the argument, but for the rebuttal, which I think we needed one last time, the two designated councilmembers signed it and found others.
Four-one, it's not always two.
Okay.
Doesn't have to be two.
No, but I think you had two, right, last time?
Because it was Larry Bragman and I.
Yeah.
Who's no longer on here, but it doesn't have to be two.
Yeah, so we just need a council subcommittee.
Just a question, I do remember, I don't remember us ever talking about year one or two, and we have tables from the old staff report that show that if we add five dollars, it's eighteen thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars more. And to me, sooner rather than later, because we're increasing costs, we're adding the local wildfire prevention, and it's a small change to the ballot language to do that. So, I don't recall us saying year two, I recall us just saying, five dollars a year, and let's run it for eleven years, which gets us to an even year, which makes a heck of a lot of sense to me, having run this before.
I'm sorry, did you say going for the nine?
No, going for eleven, eleven years, which, I don't think nine or eleven makes any difference, I mean, I think, I think it makes.
Well, I hadn't realized it was up for, for question, but I guess it occurs to me, of course, the elections are always on even years, but some elections are on presidential years, and some elections aren't, and there's more turnout on presidential years. Is there an advantage? I hesitate to guess, is there an advantage one way or the other?
I don't think there's a huge advantage, because one of the things you find when the ballots are really long, people don't vote the down ballot. So, I think the premise of saying everything in the even years brings a lot of voter turnout, you find that people don't fill out the whole ballot all the time, so there's, there's an argument that can make both ways, and from somebody who's run these things, I really think we ought to go for eleven years. I would have gone for longer if it was my druthers, because we're constantly bringing things to the voters, it's getting confusing, and I think it's time for us to do what we did in Measure C, which was run it for ten years. At that time, we weren't on this kind of schedule. So, do we have agreement about the five dollars this year, which would mean the max would be two hundred and fifty-five?
Just to clarify, starting it at one ninety-five, the current?
No, starting it at two hundred, let's start with a five-dollar increase this year, it's eighteen.
Well, I had thought that it was going to start at the current number, and that, I guess my first impression of that was that that sounded good, you know, it's not going up in the first.
Why does that sound, I mean, it's five dollars.
I, I, I actually think so, too, because it's, it seems, it's more palatable, oh, it's, we're renewing it a hundred and ninety-five, but it's going to increase, it's, you know, so you have to make kind of.
All right, so let's take a poll, we don't need to debate this. So, Peter's four, starting at a hundred and ninety-five, Renee?
I'm also the same, starting at one ninety-five.
Okay.
I'm also one ninety-five.
Same with me.
Okay, I'm not, but I lost. Okay, so we'll do that, and let's run it for eleven years, which is what we said last time.
Sure.
And even though I said before I would not do this, I'm willing to do it. Barbara Petty, who was our previous town treasurer, will help. One condition is, everybody contribute the three hundred dollars they get one month, and everybody walk precincts, because I've been raising all the money and running these things, and we all need to commit. And so, if we can do that, that will lessen some of the load. I've told Barbara Petty I will train her on how to run campaigns.
I commit.
I'll definitely do it.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
All right.
Thank you.
And everybody better get out there and walk, because I've got a crippled knee, and I'll be out there walking.
I'm going to be walking anyway.
I have bone spurs.
Okay, well.
But I'll, I'll be walking.
All right, so I'm willing to do the ballot arguments, and I'll work with, or the, I'll work with Barbara Petty, who, some of you know Barbara, she was our town treasurer for a number of years, and I've talked to.
And she wants to learn how to do this, huh?
Yeah, I've asked her, and Janet Garvin will be our treasurer, so we're in good shape.
Cool.
So, so you'll be, so, the, the people to author the ballot argument and rebuttals will be you and Barbara Petty?
Yeah.
Ah, and is the council thinking all five would sign it?
I'm not sure about that, I think we may want to strategically think about if we want to add somebody that used to be on the council, who brings a lot of credibility to these things, Councilmember Bragman. So, would that be okay if we make that decision? I'm sure all the councilmembers would be willing to sign.
I'm willing to sign.
But, and then, we may get some, you know, against, so we would have to do that as well, and just one point I want to make to folks, because people, other than me, not Bruce, because he wasn't on this council, decided to run three-year terms and start them last year, we're spending sixty thousand dollars more, so I want everybody to realize, my reason for not saying I wouldn't run this, was people need to realize what it takes to bring money into this town, and we need it. So, everybody come to my house, we'll be sitting on the floor again, and planning this whole thing.
There's not enough room in my house.
Well, thanks, yeah, no, I look forward to that, and I'll definitely.
Bring it, so.
Put in my energy, and, yeah, and I'm willing to sign any ballot arguments, but I'm also, I don't have an ego, so if it strategically makes sense to have someone else outside of the council sign, I'm more than happy to.
I feel the same way.
Great, well, thank you, everyone, and what do you need?
I just wanted clarification, you and Barbara Petty are writing the ballot argument?
Yeah, I mean, I'll really be writing it, and she'll be assisting.
Okay, that's the subcommittee.
So, in terms of action, did the council adopt the resolution yet?
No.
No, we need to adopt.
And was there any public comment?
Adrian, no, he has no public comment.
There, there was no one from the public, except the reporter.
Okay, would somebody like to make a motion to adopt the resolution, Renee?
I will do that.
And it would be with the language included in the supplement? Everybody was good with that?
Okay, do I need to read that language, or shall I just say?
With the supplement.
So, I move to adopt a resolution calling for a special municipal election to be held on November fifth, 2019, for the purpose of submitting to voters a measure authorizing the continuation of a special tax for police and fire services staffing. Public works, safety improvements, match funding for state and federal public works grants, and youth and senior programs, requesting the Marin County Board of Supervisors to consolidate with the general election conducted on that date, and requesting election services of the County Elections Department, and designate councilmembers to author ballot arguments and rebuttals if needed, and find signers for said arguments and rebuttals.
Would you like to second?
And, including this, the language in the supplement.
Yes, using the ballot language that was contained in the supplement.
Using the ballot language that's contained in the supplement.
Okay, would somebody?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, that measure passes. Adrian, you got one more item, you can't leave.
Oh, wait, and, and then, just to be clear, it'd be good to have a motion designating the mayor and Barbara Petty to be your authors of ballot arguments and rebuttals, and if needed, find signers for said arguments and rebuttals.
Okay, Renee, you want to go ahead?
Okay, so then, I would also move that we appoint Mayor Kohler and Barbara Petty to draft the.
to draft the ballot arguments and any required rebuttals and something else.
And find signers.
And find signers.
For arguments and rebuttals.
For arguments and rebuttals.
Okay, would somebody like to second that?
Second.
John, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, that measure passes.
That's late breaking news.
And, uh, Adrian, wait a minute, we've got one more item. You're leaving?
This is the most exciting one.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you for staying. I'm gonna, I'm gonna call Rob DaVinci and tell him you stayed to the bitter end. Thank you very much. Take care. Okay, so we have one more item. Item 19, which is the second reading and adoption of an ordinance of the Town Council on the max home size.
Okay, uh, you may recall at your May meeting, you introduced the ordinance. Tonight's the second reading. If you adopt it, it'll take effect in 30 days. In essence, the ordinance as proposed reduces the allowable floor area in single-family and duplex residential properties to 3,500 square feet. Ordinance specifically states existing structures larger than 35,000 square feet are not considered non-conforming units. That's pretty much the staff report, if there's any questions.
Uh, just one comment. The third whereas, on, uh, page two, we had a supplement last time, which unfortunately did not get into this version. So that's, that reads, whereas the Town Council conducted duly notice public meetings on December 5th, 2018, February 6th, 2019, and April 23rd, 2019, to consider reducing maximum house side and size and held a public hearing on April 3rd and May 1st, 2019, heard the presentation of staff reports and received public comments on the matter and... And I have communicated with our Town Clerk, and this was just inadvertently left out. So, uh, with that, uh, any questions of the staff?
So that can just be added in at the second reading?
It was already there.
That's what you introduced?
I got it, I got it.
A clerical thing, so that doesn't...
And then any, um, so any public comment? Seeing none, bring it back. Would somebody like to, uh, go through and read this whole thing?
I'll, I'll make a motion.
So you read the recommendation?
Uh, yes, uh, read by title only and adopt an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the Town Council of the Town of Fairfax Amending Chapter 17.008 Definitions, Comma, Chapter 17.016, Non-Conforming Uses in Structures, Comma, and Chapter 17.136 Floor Area of the Fairfax Municipal Code Title 17 Zoning, to Limit Maximum Floor Area for Single Family Residential and Duplex Properties, and to Revise the Standard for Determining Whether a Legal Non-Conforming Structure is More Than 50% Destroyed."
Would somebody like to second that motion?
Second.
Uh, so that was Councilmember Lacks, second read. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, that matter passes. So with this, I'd like...
So even though we actually tabled this before, can we untable the, uh, Town Manager Report?
No, we've already, we've already made a vote on that.
Yeah, we can't, we can't change it.
No, we've already made a vote on that.
Yeah, the night's, night's early. It's only 12:05.
So, I would like to, I'd like to adjourn this meeting. June 4th was the 30th anniversary of Tiananmen Square. Hundreds, two thousands of people were killed. We'll never know the amount of people that were killed. June 6th, which we're here now, uh, is the 75th anniversary of D-Day. And there was nearly 20,000 Allied and German soldiers casualties, which is truly astounding. And the last, I'd like to adjourn in memory of my dad and Deb Hufsmith. My dad would have been 102 today and Deb Hufsmith would have been 50 on June 5th, which was yesterday. So with that, thank you, everyone, for your patience and hard work. Good teamwork, everybody. And, uh, we will see you on July 17th. And we won't see you, Heather. But thank you for staying with us. You are tough. But we are tougher.